All right, it is Monday, January, not Monday, today is the Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, and the date change is indicative of this special work session that we have called the one that is school board. As we work through, like we do in regular work sessions, we will start by emphasis. And so I will start over here. Dana Miller. Heidi Cavan.
Nathan Plancher.
Sheila Krier.
How does it bring it?
Amy guys.
Shane Sanderson.
And I'm Sarah Johansson. We want to make sure that we're gonna find that as an audio recording, not a video recording. Um, there are, are we okay with volume, do you think, and all things set? Um, we have a couple of different, thank you all for making time in the first week of the year, uh, to um, meet today, and um, there are a number of items on her agenda. Again, the goal of this meeting is really to have one more conversation, given the newness of the board. Um, and then you grow changes that are happening in the year. It seemed prudent, and there were a couple of requests, just to make sure that we have our ducks in a row, that we are ready for our organizational and regular meeting, which will happen this upcoming Monday on January 8th, 2024, which will correspond to the board and the board and. Okay, so the line of reference today that we'll be going through is um, affirmation of what we see are the 2024 committee appointments. Dates around people's negotiations. Um, just that I wanted to update you on, um, an affirmation of our 2024 professional development schedule. That was something that we talked about at the board self-evaluation, as well as other things. And so we just, and there's some questions around that and that we can talk about that'll lead into committees, a conversation around the 2024 organizational structure. And then harkening back to two sessions of a number of years ago, probably um, 10 or 11. Uh, there was a time when we looked at the agenda for the regular meeting at the work session. And again, given the amount of newness and things that we're having, um, it made sense and was prudent to just go over what is um, at this point, what might be added to that January 8th agenda, so that we are ready to go with that. So that is the agenda. But is there, is that an alignment with what everyone thinks they are here for? And does that work? Um, I think the goal is to be done before six o'clock and we'll be, um, we'll try to get our work done, so.
Please be mindful that the, the microphone is here, so just speak up to the whole room so that you're heard.
About our questions, make it to the microphone.
Thank you.
Um, I'm wondering if it's important that we never post the meeting, that we never begin. Uh, you'll notice. So, you're starting at, I should have said. Okay, fantastic. So first item in our packet, affirmation of our committees, as well as the times for our committees. Um, I think I've heard a question about the stakeholders.
Um, I don't have another paper copy. It's in your, yeah, it's in your board book.
So it, we, I think there was a question around the stakeholders committee, is that correct? Uh, it's been on Tuesday, and I was wondering if it changed that to any other day of the week except Tuesday. Um, before we talk about timing, and that would be as we do the scheduling, we'll want to make sure to plan with the administrator that's connected to that, Amy Parnell, who I think is back. Um, I think Millen had a question about participation. And so did you think, Millen, that you were on stakeholders? So this list was sent out after our board work session for review and confirmation. Uh, so just, I'm just wanting to confirm, are you with the stakeholders committee as listed, or do we need to enter that into a conversation?
No, that's fine. Not anymore, that's okay.
Okay, so the stakeholders committee is Heidi, at this point Heidi, Dan, Sheila with Pars as the alternate. Does everyone else think that they landed on the stakeholder committee? Okay, and that time may be a change from Tuesdays that has not been determined yet, about what that is.
Um, I mean, I guess I can't, you know, overlap with their committee that we're doing, so. And, and Amy Parnell has to be part of this team, so I don't know that that's how we make the side of the day. Although, do we have one on the calendar for next week?
Uh, actually.
I think it might just be on there because it's just a standard.
Yeah, it's on there from 12 to 1. But here's the old one.
Amy, continue this.
All right.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
So, um, okay, so I think otherwise, um, we have most of our things, there's a lot of committees that meet kind of in advance of the first and third week of the month are pretty big because we need in advance of the board meeting, so we need to have the board's session, just wanted to do that. Um, so that is there. Did everyone, was everyone able to review this committee list and what the times are that are posted? And does that all seem in alignment with what you thought you were doing this year, as well as what you're able to do?
Um, does the policy committee need any, the time to meet from? Um, as an alternate, that timing given by other commitments may be tough. Um, so if anybody else wanted to take the policy alternate, I would be open to that. Um, and I could take on. Um, so I could take, first question mark on human resources point.
We could, so we can talk about this, we can add you as this HR alternate. One of the things that we'll talk about, this is a good time. So remember that committees need to be three people, um, that we meet. And so typically what happens is if the three committees, we have the standing time, not because life happens, and then if someone cannot make it, um, if there is an alternate designated, then they will go to the alternate and say, I can't make this month's HR meeting, can you take it instead? And they can go, um, when you do that, you send a note to the chair of the committee, um, and the alternate. And so if I couldn't make the HR committee, right, I would send a note to the HR committee chair and to Heidi, if she was the alternate, to say, I can't make the HR committee, can someone, can you do it? And then if it, if Heidi doesn't, if Heidi says, sorry, as an alternate, I can't make it, right, because life happens, then the chair of the committee would then go back to the whole board and say, hey, we've got an opening in HR, who wants to pass it? And so the really great opportunity is, um, you know, alternates are your go-to person, but it, it's also times where maybe the whole commit, when someone from the committee can't make it, or sometimes we'll have two people gone from a committee, in which case then we'll send a note to open it up to the board. So just know that from these committee assignments, uh, we have a committee, and that's important, and we have an alternate, but sometimes there are opportunities from the rest of the board. Any questions? Heidi, if someone wants to be the designated alternate for policy, we can do that. Otherwise, we can leave it open, and anytime someone can't make it to a policy committee, we can throw it open to the board to see who would like to take it. Is there anyone that wants to be a policy alternate?
Stakeholder committee, is that during daytime? And is it every week, once a month?
No, once a month. After the, it's always the Tuesday after.
Tuesday after, okay.
So it's the science, Sheila had asked for a different day, but I think the week is the second week of the month. So the week is the second week. The time is TBD, I think Amy, um, asked, has asked, she sometimes has commitments early and late, and so her best, that it's during.
Okay, yeah, and as long as I can plan, I think I should be okay, but I may have the similar situation since it's during daytime, but we can work through.
Okay, we'll take up Heidi off the policy as the alternate, we'll put Heidi on as a Heidi. I'm dropping my H's today. Um, any other conversation, any other do otherwise to the committees? The ladies meeting, the third Wednesday, finance is scheduled. At least, at least meeting, just another reminder too, for new board members, this is when they're targeted to meet, this is on the calendar invites are. Sometimes we do things like change the meetings that are the first week of the month because of spring break, and everybody's gone. Or sometimes we say we're gonna have, you know, like, well, like the HR committee, which is supposed to meet tomorrow, Stacy, who's gone for the HR committee, so we are not meeting tomorrow, will approve the consent agenda, we'll review the consent agenda, not approve, but review the consent agenda, items in advance in the meeting, and we'll schedule a meeting at a different time. So the times that committees are scheduled to meet are meant to be a guide and a placeholder. Sometimes that changes based on the group. Sometimes we've had to change things for MSB, right, because all board members are gone, so.
We could use policy as an example. Somebody planned an election, we did double policy meetings, we did multiple three-hour ones versus an hour and a half. Then we eliminated some, allowing Amy the opportunity to run an election. So we get creative.
Opportunity. It's around, and again, the goal of, um, so we can move into this a little bit, the goal of committees really are to support the work of the district, right? And so, um, we're not meeting just to meet, um, and it's really to making sure that we create administrative, maybe their work. Okay, um, and we'll. Fine, so if we're okay with the committees. Um, one, I, I have some, I have two pieces of information for you. The first piece of information is around the Bright Works. Um, and um, the Bright Works, which used to be Metro Exu, and the Metro Exu, um, group, so Bright Works is a member, is another school, they're a membership organization. And uh, they do need membership from four electoral districts. Uh, and we happen to be in the fourth electoral district, and the meetings happen quarterly as opposed to um, monthly. The meetings are in, I think, Cottage Grove or Inver Grove. Meetings are. Arden Hills, right. The meetings are in Arden Hills. Um, and it requires a nomination, like you can self-nominate, um, and then there'll be a voting process from the people in there. So, um, we don't have to have someone that sits on the Bright Works, there's a number of kinds of things that Bright Works does. But um, if someone is interested in doing Bright Works, um, I can pass along that. We're considering potentially doing it, depending our group, but I don't know who is even coming out of it. Our electoral district number four is Eastern Carver, Eden Prairie, Jordan, Orin, Prior Lake, Shaker, Pimaconia, Wayzata. So.
What is the scope of work?
For sure, so. So we take the place of, so Bright Works is the metro's response to what is the outstate service collaboratives. So some of the things that they do is they provide, so service collaboratives, and Chase or Nate can jump into, or Dana too can jump in, right, as we go through. So service collaboratives really are ways that sometimes they do um, resource sharing. And so service collaboratives might come together to get a milk contract or some sort of food service contract to get lower prices on commodities. Um, sometimes service collaboratives are around implementation of curriculum. And so my guess is, is that the service collaboratives are doing some implementation around the REDEC and some of that literacy things. Um, it has, just like the other ones, it has its own executive director, that's John Schultz, the superintendent of Hopkins, and then it's Dana. Um, and there are representatives, and this is interesting because it's made up of both um, elected school board members as well as community members. So, um, like, for example, Andrea Keen, who's, and that's if we don't, if we end up not sending anyone, or someone doesn't come, um, someone doesn't get on from Wayzata, Andrea Keen served on what was the Metro Exu board, and is now a community member that serves on Bright Works, and will be at all of those meetings, and so she will be able to pass along the information that's happening. Most of the work, I would say, and administrators jump in, I think a lot of the work that happens from a Bright Works standpoint is really around administration and is around a management piece. Um, and that there's a lot of communication that happens with Bright Works and the admin, but it is a chance to kind of get a, again, another bigger, broader picture.
Um. Professional development is a big thing for them, I think, too. And they're being amazing, and there are several exes that are on the state, and we have kind of a regional center. And I think probably in the non-metro areas, there's a lot more collaboration and combination, because they don't have a critical mass of students or size of school districts sometimes to be able to offer some of the things that they do. So I think consolidating resources, I think they can provide more opportunities for a regional area.
The Bright Works board needs five times during the fiscal year, between July 1st and June 30th, on the third Wednesday of August, October, January, April, and June, and the meetings are held from 3:30 to 5:30 in person in Arden Hills. So. Sure, I, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, there's, I can send it out to the board if that is something that um, you would be interested in going to. Um, and I think if you put your name in, and I put my name in, or I haven't decided yet, so that's fine too, and it'll be the nomination. So it sounds like, I think the question would be, so Millen, maybe you are interested in doing it?
If nobody doesn't want to.
Well, again, and we don't have to, so I think, um, what we'll decide to do is I will, I will forward it, I will forward this nomination process to the board. And um, if everyone can say, if someone says, I'm choosing to do this, um, then you can let us know. Just an FYI, nominations are due honor before January 19th, 2023, and then I think the decision um, will be made by the end of January, I guess. Um, then probably for attendance at 5:00.
A minor, minor edit, I just noticed, it should be ECSU, Exu, Educational Cooperative Service.
So I will forward the email to all. Okay, other than that, these assignments, did that look, does that look okay to everyone?
Yep.
Okay, and then finally, I have some information with Stacy around. Um, we got some feedback after our uh, December 4th meeting, or whatever day that was, around um, our negotiation connections. And HR encouraged that we have four different people assigned to them, um, just because the meetings will be happening there. Um, she's hoping, Stacy says, we do need a rep for each group listed and alternates. So they need an independent rep for each group listed, and alternates might overlap. Um, I do hope to start negotiations in April or May, in an effort to ensure that we complete all groups prior to June 30th. So, uh, we need four unique people to serve as negotiators.
From the first post.
Yep.
If I remember, Dan and I had a volume due.
Yep.
That had not changed.
Well, I can't remember, I, what we need to do is you and Dan volunteered for multiple, and Stacy sent back and said, we need one unique. So if you remember which ones you, if each one of you want to give one that you wanted to do.
I was very committed to Paris.
What do you recommend your, for your? Do you like, what do you recommend? Okay. Princess, Dana, Millen.
Why is it at cafes?
Millen is why is that at cafes? Admin, pros, or custodial, that's another type.
See, my name is on against admin professionals.
No, I would vote pros. Admin professionals and paras, like para-professionals. That was the joke, that was the joke.
So what does that involve?
Right, so that's a great question. So teacher, so for bargaining unit negotiation, so we have um, five bargaining units within the district. And so we have four upper negotiations this year. Um, and these are traditional bargaining processes. And so you serve as the representative from the school board, um, on the team with the HR, so um, with the HR director. Um, there's usually some kind of connection with finance that sits on the team. And then who supervises the admin? Who supervises admin? I guess there's not a supervisor, like in um, why is that at cafes? Um, Michelle will sit at the table, or for Bright, or for, why is that at kids? Um, Jenny will be there, or, and for custodians, John Deutsch will be there. So I don't know if there's another admin that's there. Really, our uh, HR team leads the conversation. It's a traditional bargaining unit, so you'll schedule oftentimes the union, in a couple hour-long blocks. The union, they're, the union comes with a union representative, um, and the, and our HR and finance representative for the district. And you look at the contract, and the admin, the district will submit their recommendations. The union will submit their recommendations, you go through, some are, some are easy, kind of TAs, like this is language or statute change, some of them are more in practice. Sometimes they meet three times and they get it done, sometimes they meet for three months, and you know, they put in a bunch of time. So most of the time for each of these things, um, our, our negotiators are also working. So the likelihood of them being in the late afternoon, um, or evening, or early evening are probably pretty high. And Stacy's practice has been to schedule them, um, kind of in a block. So we're gonna schedule every Monday and Tuesday, and the, or every Monday and Wednesday in the month of May. And, you know, and try to knock them out, or something like that.
And these are usually in that month of April, May?
Wants to start in April or May, it'll depend on, we can get our language suggestions together, and then it'll depend on when the union comes to get their language suggestions together. So they start when both the district and the union says we have our, we're ready. And then the goal is always, um, and we do a really good job of this in Wayzata, the goal is, but not always, but the goal is always to try to end by June 30th, so that we don't have to do that. So, yeah, it's admin professionals and para-professionals, and we just have to abbreviate that for.
I follow your suggestion and sign up for one of the. I don't understand the timing. Lots of things to, and since Millen is my uh, mentor, um, he might train me, so that I'll be ready next time. I'm, I'm. I don't want to sign up just for signing, uh, so to speak, I want to know what they. And if it is especially, I mean, it will be, and obviously, yes, more time, I.
I think it's a training, I mean, I think in terms of negotiations are a really great way to train in, like, and to learn things from conversations, because you, yeah. Um, because it's just, I mean, really, it's a lot of observing, no matter who you are. Um, because teacher negotiates, but it's mostly all observing, actually, in the conversation as, as our leaders run it. So, um, you know, you and Millen, we have two other ones open, or.
For principals? Which one do you sign up for?
I put down a line in December, second, I have to relinquish two.
No, no, I mean, the negotiations, which, which of the four?
Oh, that's a check.
Okay, so why don't we do this, where I can, I can.
I'm just curious, if, is this a maybe, um, maybe I'm, you know, newbie, uh, I, I just want to, if it's actually better, I'm fine. I did, I did principal negotiations last year.
Because you signed up for.
You'll move to custodians. So, and it's important to identify, in terms of the role of the alternate, it's less about, I mean, I think it's less about you swapping in and out of the meetings, and more about if the meetings start to be scheduled, like, let's say the meetings are scheduled for Mondays and Wednesdays from five to seven. And then you're like, oh geez, I have to lose my son's baseball team on Mondays and Wednesdays from five to seven, could the alternate do it? And so that is the reason why. It's less who, it's less multiple people popping in. Once a negotiation team is set, it's set, it's, and more about who would be the second person that we would go to. So did you hear that Valentina will move to Wayzata cafes?
Yes, it's like.
Yeah, yeah, and then Millen will move to custodians. And the para-professionals and administrative professionals, which is our classroom assistants and secretaries and administrative supporters.
Does it require a lot of time commitment?
Again, it's, she's gonna block off, uh, you know, I, I mean, I don't know, if I were to guess, what would I think, 10 to 20 hours over a three-month period? So like, I, yeah, yeah, it's two to three hours.
Okay, and it's most likely gonna be end of the day, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know exactly when, but again, our, um, both our admin pros and our para-professionals are working during the day, and, and we don't take them out of the week. It's usually outside of the workday.
Yeah, I, we can put one in.
And, and all of this is, so here's what happens with this. So the steps on how we will schedule this is we will give these to Stacy, and we'll say, these are the people that are interested in negotiations. That means she will include you, she will reach out to you and include you in the plan. And so, and she really does, you have, thinking about it, you know, we have six to 12 people sitting around a table for these meetings, and so coordinating people's schedules for six to 12 people in the springtime is usually a feat. And so she'll, but she'll include you into the conversation, right? And so then you get to weigh, and that's why we want to assign, and you get to weigh in in that initial conversation. And then if you're like, I can't do it, right, then you can reach out to the board and say, I, I can't do admin pros. Um, it's on Mondays and Wednesdays at this time. And then maybe it'll happen that Millen's like, oh, I can absolutely do that, and can you do Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then you can swap.
Okay.
Or it can come to the rest of the board and, and Heidi and I, who haven't signed up for anything this evening. So this is, putting this on here isn't setting anyone in stone, like, you must do it, clear your schedule. It's more of a direction to the admin, um, and you see to say, here's your contact for that. And just know as a board, we might need to step in and help our colleagues, depending on what happens. Okay, our mentors are set, our teams are set. Um, as it relates to this part of the conversation, the last thing, and I want to bring in um, some conversations to you, I think you brought this up too, at our, at our board self-evaluation, and Heidi too, just around, um, oh, before I do that. Um, something that was left hanging at our organizational meeting was a review of our standard operating procedures and a board hand. And, and, and a thought of having a group that would review that and update our SOPs, as well as start to collect other board handbooks, and, and probably with Amy, Amy's been doing a lot of work, so she would help with that. The question becomes from this group, is that, is the creation of kind of a, a start of a draft to bring to the board to review the SOPs, and start to create a board handbook, something that we would like to develop an ad hoc committee for? Um, where people would start to meet, or is that something that we would want to have the chair and the vice chair sort of take leadership of, and then bring to the board at work sessions as needed? Is it something that would sit in the superintendent evaluation committee? Those are the three buckets that have been passed around as places where it could land.
An ad hoc committee?
Ad hoc committee.
I would, I would propose that. How can we design for? I have to read. The ground is covered and suggested. It doesn't have to be a modern meeting, right?
It happens at a work session, or a spot, I mean, either at a regular work session, so in the past, I'll give you a precedent. Um, in the past, we had an ad hoc committee to start to look at our strategic directions. And so the ad hoc committee, when we looked at the strategic directions, the last time, met with representatives from the administration, and we kind of looked at what it was, and then we had a couple board, and they just sort of outlined, this is what we need to do, and then, um, and then it would go from there. I would say for this ad hoc committee, um, it might be something like, um, the, either, um. it, it could go two ways, like it could be that we start to collect a number of board handbooks. And, and we sort of, and we have a conversation at a work session around what about the standard operating procedures? Look that needs to be changed or whatever. And then, and so the board sort of leans in on that. And then maybe the committee then works on the wordsmithing and kind of compiling. And then it comes back to that again. Whether it's at a regular work session, depending on the amount of the agenda items or at a special work session specifically devoted to this process. Or tied in congruence with some of our professional development, right? Which we'll talk next.
Who would lead the conversation, the first meeting in the work session? Based on few handbooks that we would collect? Administration or?
No, I would imagine whoever is going to be as part of the ad hoc committee, right? I mean, and so, um, if it was at a work session, the, um, it would be, it could, yeah, I mean, I guess. The, if the ad hoc committee has met first, the ad hoc committee can say, we met and decided that we think the board should review the contents of these four handbooks. Then send that out. It could be Amy comes in and says, I've been working on this and this. And so how that actually unfolds a little bit and that process or that timeline might start with the ad hoc committee identifying with Amy and, and a representative what needs to be done.
I've been collecting, I, I just, yes, Amy's thrown in because I've been collecting, uh, handbooks from neighborhood. Yes, weirdly enough, I didn't know why I was doing that, but now here we are. I just knew. I, I don't know, probably. So I have them, I just haven't done anything with them. So I feel like it's similar to how we do policy committee, Melan, and, um, so I can start, you know, compiling and however you want to do the committee, I can disseminate what I have and start reaching out to other districts if you'd like. You know, I guess.
It might not, I'm sorry, you have a question. It might also be that we as a board say, these are the kinds of things we think should be announced. We'll have to copy someone else's handbook. Who might have lots of questions about, I would really like to know about this. And I.
I want to go back to the idea of how we, how we actually functionally do it. We could do an ad hoc committee. The superintendent evaluation committee does not meet for, like, it's not a monthly meeting. And so it feels like that could also be something that could be put on to raise superintendent evaluation. Um, and kind of fill in some of those yet, so that we don't have to create another entity and it's already part of the works.
That is fine, but you just, my mind knows a two. I'm saying that superintendent evaluation committee cannot do that other work. That just comes standard operating procedures.
The, the reason I think it would make sense is because we have the board self evaluation from, of the superintendent evaluation committee. And so it seems like it would be all the same. But it's just, it's a thought.
And eventually, you know, the whole board looks at it, makes comments, and so there's changes.
If the people on the superintendent evaluation committee are, I mean, they're just getting something added to their. And to that, right, I think that's a really good point. When we talk about board development, like that board development coming out of the, in, in this past year, just out of practice, some of the. Superintendent Evaluation Committee. So to your response, right, I mean, this is their time to do it. We could change it to the superintendent and board development committee, which then is a little more reflective of the workforce community. Um, is able to, because it is true that the superintendent evaluation committee needs, you know, only a few times a year in that process. And it's really, and it, it, all of our committees are in a number of ways. But it's kind of an administrative function, which is really just the, the collecting and dissemination of information. Because all of the activities that get run from that committee happened with the board as a whole. And it's really just some people helping to get us organized. So. You might get to hang out with Heidi and I on a monthly basis. To a, opposed to, you know, just a couple times a year. And, and then we'll draw Amy in and any other admin from doing. That work? And do we want to rename the superintendent to the superintendent and board development committee to be reflected?
I would say they go together, right? Because the SOPs are our governing document. And we evaluate ourselves against our governing document. Right? Am I, am I, like, would I think about that?
SOPs that have a lot of policy involved in that, you know, legal stuff. Board development, not so much.
Oh, standard operating procedures, I just have to, because I help out with the policies a lot. Yeah, I see them as two very different, personally. Because policies are really govern the district and our actions, our behaviors, what teachers are expected to do, what administrators are expected to do. Standard operating procedures, it really, there's not a legal component. It really is tied to what's the board saying, the board lack of behaviors. So if you're looking at the difference between the two, it's policies are how we as a team administratively run the district. And we use those as our, as our guide. Standard operating procedures are really how the board says, here's how we will self govern ourselves.
But they're not involving that, for example, the administration meeting.
Right, but that one is, with the standard operating procedures. I think you can build in however you want them to build in. But it's really just saying, kind of what's our expected? It's like a kind of a handbook for, some version of the handbook. I see them as two different things personally, but, you know, I really defer to the, the boards.
No, I'm not saying that, it's probably true about the policy. I'm just saying that there are policy things involved in SOPs. But maybe the policy company might, might be able to work on this something better. Board development? That's, that's like a manual, right? That would be a man.
Yeah, the handbook, yeah, is more like a manual. But the board development to me is our regular professional.
So, so the logic that swam down from this, right? If I, if we know what's happening is we started with a request from the superintendent evaluation. And we don't have to change it. The history of this, we started with a request from the superintendent evaluation committee that says we should do a board self evaluation. And we will do that. So the superintendent evaluation committee did that. As part of the board self evaluation, we identified a need to create a board handbook and review our SOPs as a board, as a collective whole. And so when we think about the superintendent, so just sort of picking up from the process, and I think either way can happen, right? Picking up from the process of where we are right now and where we've been. If we, and so far, some of the impetus for the self evaluation and the review came out of the superintendent evaluation committee that happened last year. So, and then as we talked about it this year, we put on the table, it could be an ad hoc committee. It could come out of superintendent evaluation committee. I think there was talk about both would seem amenable and fine to the board. Then the suggestion was made from one of the superintendent evaluation committee last year, who's also chairing it this year, who worked with last year's chair that said, hey, we don't meet very often. Each of us as board members are busy. Do we need to have another committee doing things? Or do we take advantage of the committee that we have and put it there? So then the conversation, I think, went to, okay, kind of makes sense to put it there because we're already doing it, right? And we're not meeting on a regular basis or have as much of a full plate as some of the other things. And then, and then there was a question which was very legitimate, but the name of the committee is just superintendent evaluation. We should have our new committee name be more reflective of the work that we're doing, which evolved us to that. So now we're back with the question on the table. Do we develop an ad hoc committee because we're not ready to put it in the superintendent evaluation committee yet? Do we put it in the superintendent evaluation committee? And if we put it in the superintendent evaluation committee, do we just call it the superintendent evaluation committee? Do we call it the superintendent evaluation and board development? We need a flow chart. So, question on the table.
So the superintendent evaluation committee. So that we stay on top of that. And, but I, and so I think in the in betweens, there's nothing other than time.
We don't make decisions about committees based on the people that are on the committee at the time. We make decisions about the committee based on what is logical in terms of best work practice and the committee. So the question on the table is, do we believe what we started to do last year that we didn't formalize? That we could broaden the board's role of superintendent evaluation to superintendent evaluation and board development? Let's start there. Does that seem like a logical move? Kara says yes. Sheila says yes. Melan says yes. Heidi says yes.
Especially if I'm chairing it, yes.
Sorry, I know, I'm just like, I'm sorry, I just need you guys to speak up, so it's recorded, sorry.
Okay, and I'm fine with it too. So the superintendent evaluation committee will be changed in the board packet to, wow, you guys, we're doing good work, superintendent evaluation and board development committee. And they will create the timeline and the process for a review of the standard operating procedures and the creation of a board handbook. I'm under the administration and the whole board will be brought into the process for input, feedback, evaluation and implementation as needed.
So do we want for both the superintendent and the school board to have evaluation and development? If so, you might want to call it superintendent and school board evaluation and development. So then superintendent and school board, you can both. You go superintendent evaluation and school board development. I get evaluated, you get development. And, I mean, it's in the way it's written, it's just a thought.
Appreciate our team.
In the big scheme of things, I care one way or the other, not really, but I think it is both, really. I mean, I would put board development through that process as well.
Yep, words matter. So you said superintendent and school board evaluation and development committee or development and evaluation? Okay. Yay, okay, so stay tuned for that. And on that note, then, um, on that note, then, just a quick affirmation, we're going to go back to committees, but because we're talking about this right now, to confirm our training schedule for 2024. The goal, we kind of talked it before and I think you said enough, but going through it from a school board perspective, that we would have a board professional development time with Dan Hooverman and sometime in the first quarter. Then we would do a mid-year board self evaluation and check in as well as a mid-year superintendent evaluation, you know, check in. Where around Fiona Hilli. Followed by a board professional development, again, um, probably with Dan, but in this process in sort of the third quarter. With then the board self evaluation. Um, actually, it's, we're in sort of a different one because the mid-year board self evaluation and check in and a superintendent final year, or so the board and superintendent. We do chase it, at the evaluation in the, over the summer, at the end of the school year in advance of that. So we get those reports kind of on a regular basis. But that's our professional development, two professional development sessions that'll happen either at a regularly scheduled work session or a specially scheduled work session, depending on the topic and the need and what's happening. And then evaluation processes of a mid-year and final year for the board and the super. Does that seem amenable to everyone in our planning? Okay. Last thing about committees, no. Um, two things about committees, rotating assignment, board reports and agenda planning. Rotating assignments, Amy, our district liaison, partners for healthy kids, agenda planning. Okay, and that is, we did assign up for you. No, you'll send us something or you'll assign us and, and then if it doesn't work for our calendar, we'll swap it.
I think the easiest is to send it out, is everyone comfortable with signup genius? Yes, okay, so I'll send out signup genius. Okay, um, so I'll send that out for all of the options. And just, I'll, I'll put it in the disclaimer, but please just, you know, space out your, um, signup, so don't take, you know, two district liaisons back to back. There'll be plenty for everyone, there'll be extra space. But once all seven of you sign up, then I'll send out a reminder, you know. If you'd like to sign up for more, please do so. Um, and please, maybe for, um, just to be helpful, maybe those of you that have been around for a while, just take some of the earlier ones and help everyone ease in. That's just advice, that's not requirement, but, okay, but I'll get that out to everyone, um, tomorrow.
And the same with board reports. Um, there, there's not typically a board report at the first board meeting because we do a lot of talking around our committee. And the board reports, um, will start in February, we'll move that up to leadership as to how that happens. But just know that that is, and it might be the same way that Amy said that the first board reports are. And so we'll have to have a conversation about, um, what the board reports are. They have historically been just sort of an update on, uh, I'm Sarah and I sit on these committees and these are some of the things that we're doing. And then we did sort of move to, and this is when we got out of school, then we're going to talk about what it means to be a school board member and that kind of thing. And then that felt a little clunky and then we never, and then we didn't do that. So maybe we just go back, I don't know what everyone thinks, but maybe we just go back to giving a report on kind of what our committees are and what we're doing. Um, that will get passed on. Uh, and agenda planning again will get passed on too, just know that that, yeah, so that'll happen. So then last, about committees that I've been promising for a long time, is we had a conversation in the board self evaluation around what, how to use committees. Like what do we, what purpose do committees serve? What we do into the meetings and how that happens. And so I'm going to open it up a little bit for the requests from current board member, you know, returning board members. What committees do, maybe in a request from our administrators around, how do you see the role of committees? And then an opportunity for me to, I don't have any questions that we have around these committees that we talk, which is pretty unique. So why not?
I can start with my policy committee, I've been on the policy committee, it'll be my career. This year, chair, next year, I'll be chair again. And thanks to Amy and Nate, my job is very, very easy, very easy. So what we do is I've prepared the timeline now, but, but the first meeting is between the three of us. We have a set of policies that we have to review every year. After a certain number of years. Nate and Amy look at that and then we sit down. They have suggestions on what, what we do, what we want to do. And before that, they, you talk to the admin, right, kind of that, it's a teaching and learning issue that, you know, we get involved. Finance, maybe we get involved. And so therefore, these administrators, the conversation, and they look at that, they knew the policies. Look at it, then we have if the policy committee meet, I think maybe for two. But always before the board meeting where the policies are approved or resolved or whatever. And so then at that policy committee meeting, we have some other questions that might come up. Other changes that might be suggested. Dogma can include those, Amy gets those changes. And then they are presented at the board meeting by me. And people want to do that, there is a few days given for the meeting. For them to look at that, the changes and then what it is or not. Then the policy will get approved for those specific policies, then we'll go on to the next process and continue every month.
A little bit of background too. As we go through, we use the MSBA policies as our guide. So the Minnesota School Board Association really have model policies. We work with both policy and regulations. Regulations allow us to make adjustments administratively without having to have board approval if necessary. If there is some sort of change or there's something legal wise that comes out ruling, we're able to pivot very quickly and make sure that we're compliant with that. It's important to recognize legislative statutes always trump whatever our policies are. So even if we had a policy that was out of date and there was a state statute, state statute is the, uh, the thing that we have to follow legally. Our goal is to try to really get about 85 to 90% of the work complete before we ever get it to the committee. So we do a lot administratively behind the scenes. There, I would say 95% of the policies are pretty straightforward. The 5% is where we probably spend a lot of time where we could have in an hour and a half, five policies, we go through four of them in 10 minutes and then one, you could spend well over an hour on depending what the topic is, depending upon what other school districts are doing, how are, I, I think of the REED Act that was recently updated and being able to align that policy and that Dana and her team worked to be able to update that. They're reaching out to other school districts, how are you implementing it? How are you building policy around this? MSBA, for the most part, is really good about going pretty quickly, but then some things take longer. And we, we really try to use them as the guide versus creating it from scratch ourselves. Some things we all, uh, we might run through our legal team and be able to say, are we in compliance? Is this looking appropriate from a legal standpoint? Are we missing anything disciplinary wise, bullying wise? You know, what are the things we need to consider that? Again, the, the MSBA, it's a model, it's not the cut and paste. Sometimes we would, if it's the first time a policy's ever been created, we might start there and then further the conversation. So just know that we, our goal for that policy is always to try to get as much accomplished before we hit the meeting, to try to save the time because you could literally go in and do all hand by hand edits. I think a comment should go here, I think it should be, that's not what we're looking for in those meetings. We're really looking for overwhelmingly, what's the content? And then we can go back and do the edits afterwards and Amy's really good about doing the edits afterwards. Okay, so.
One more, one more comment quickly. This last May, legislature had more than 50 different policy changes that they've seen. But MSBA did a very good job in getting those. At least tried to change most of them in a couple of months so that they have put by us. We were able to jump on that and get our opinion there.
It's important to note that if the legislature passes it as law, we don't get to say, well, we don't want to do that, right? We have to by law.
Right.
At least a notice. At least a notice, they'll let us know it's coming.
Okay. Yeah, and that was actually my question because especially when something changes at legislative level, sometimes it's up for interpretation. So that's what I was trying to understand, who exactly interprets and who tells us what those guardrails are? So it comes from MSBA.
Both MSBA and.
And on all legal team.
We might go to our legal.
Got it, okay.
To be able to say, we are working through the interpretation, help us. And they might do the research on it, say, here's what the.
I kind of wanted to talk more about committees in general, if we're going to this conversation. Only because in our self-evaluation, you know, we talk a lot about governance versus management, which is, you know, it's a gray area. There's no, you know, we were shown a scale, I guess, I, you guys have already talked to, um, Dan, right? About this, so you're kind of familiar with, you know, we talked to Amy, it's a seven on a scale of 1%. And I feel, you know, my experience has been that the committees help us to be at that seven. And, you know, they're an opportunity to learn, first of all, to like really delve deeply into, you know, a topic that we might not go into detail in during work sessions or board meetings. And it's a, an opportunity to, you know, ask why things were done a certain way and, and if you're, you know, if you have concerns or you're hearing things in the community, to just share that at, at those times and, if, you know, to have kind of very close and detailed conversations with administration from various aspects of the district. Which, you know, it's just, again, it is very unique to Yidda and it's, I've been surprised at how like, when I talk to other people that don't have that, you know, that it's just a really nice thing that we have, that our administration, you know, makes the time for. Um, and helps us be in that, you know, we're in that governance role, but we, we can be a little bit out of seven in the committee meetings where we just have like more, again, more opportunity to learn and to, again, to be a conduit for the community and ask questions. And that's very, you know.
It also supplements the requirement of the open meeting law, actually more than three members attend the conversation than the public and all that. This helps us avoid that and still get the conversation going. If we come back to the board, some of it might be talked about that for SOPs, the board, uh, board development handbook.
I think it's been helpful over the years for relationship building, for the administration and school board. And it's also a great opportunity for smaller groups, I mean, for board members to provide insight. So here's what I'm hearing in the community. Take this into consideration as you give view to this policy or this operational procedure, whatever the case may be. So I think it's, it's really been a big part of the culture development within the district and trust building. I think with, uh, the administration, administrative team as well as the, uh, school board. And what I've always appreciated too is at work sessions, whenever some, for example, if an executive director is presenting, there are three really well-informed board member colleagues that you can rely on and kind of look to, who you know would have likely heard great depth about a particular topic. So maybe Dana bring, you know, this approach forward. It made good sense. And similarly, when we bring the school board policies to the meeting, so another board chair of the office. And it's important for the community to know that the, uh, policy committee has reviewed these in depth and spent a great amount of time reviewing, editing. And I think that brings some, some trust and openness, transparency to the community about how we develop our policies and, and how initiatives are reviewed. So there's a lot of work that happens in committee. And it is unique, I think, to us too, and it kind, it works well for us, I think. I've been really appreciated in my fifteen and a half years here to be connected to, uh, the, the committee and gives us a great opportunity to get to know each other. It's kind of hard to be one of them. I've been kind of going to almost all of them, but it's a big time. Yeah, that is a good investment.
I wonder if it's more of a coming and teaching on the district's inside, that structure. I think it has been, it works for them so much more effective because of just what Chase said, there aren't people that know. And it's not only if you don't teach by this, you're teaching, I'm able to put them into those meetings. Some of the key workers on that work that can answer even are always active. So there's building that trust and depth, even if you say all of the teaching. But I also think it's a great choice, we intentionally build teaching for everyone, um, the week before the work session. So we are previewing what we're bringing because that also gives us feedback. Um, did something not make sense in this? There's something we would suggest add. So it's, it's also self-serving, I guess, data went from two to almost three. From my perspective, the process to try to file one at that presentation and Chase is going to go much deeper than we go at that work stuff, work session meeting. It also gives us good ears. So maybe that's more of a teaching learning thing, but when something is being heard out there, maybe it's not something, gives an opportunity for more of a bring that directly. Maybe it doesn't. So I just.
The minutes that you mentioned, so this last year, we started, I created Google Doc or Google Drive files for each of the committees. I think the ones that have utilized them have been very successful in passing on information to other board members because all board members have access to this Google Drive. And I will happily hit reset for this year. But I would just recommend continuing to use them because that way, if you're not on the committee, you can look back and see what the committee discussed and, and get some more information aside from just at the board meetings or work sessions. But again, I would just maybe try to reinvigorate using that as a resource. Again, some committees are better than others, but.
The having the meetings, I think, allows for a lot of transparency and a lot of accountability as to what's going on in meetings and just so that everybody has an opportunity. So for example, um, I remember seeing something in the finance committee notes and I looked back at Cheryl, who was chair at the time, um, and asked her questions. And that, and that kind of quick tree of follow-up also gets answers really quickly. You don't have to feel like you're waiting for so long to understand something. Um, and so I think, I think that structure is really important. I'm in the second and third relationship building, it's a big deal because it takes a lot of fun. I think what I've appreciated about that relationship building is that I get an opportunity to understand how our administration and how, and where they're coming from. And so that really helps in, um, creating that bond of professional trust so that when a recommendation hits the table, be, I, I understand their mindset. And that helps me to understand, you know, whether or not I want to go against or no, which questions to ask so that I can get to a yes or what things we can talk further about to get us to a bold yes. So that's.
I'll, I'll add to Dana's, that it's not just teaching and learning where people ask the questions. You know, I mean, every committee is a chance for every member to understand things better. And so to be like, I heard that this is going on, can you tell me about that? You know, and give me more context about that. Or sometimes, I, you know, um, each of us have heard about kind of the dance floor, right? And so when are you invited down onto the dance floor and when do you go back up? Our communities are really one of that time where we sit in a dance floor and we were on the dance floor and we're having those conversations. Maybe there's this, maybe there's a question that you think is a question that you should know the answer to. Or maybe there's a question that you think is a really hard question. Committee is a chance to be able to say, you know, gosh, I, I should know this by now, but, you know, what do we do about this? Or a hard question about this. I guess the last thing I'll say in Shaila's today, you want to talk again too, is I want to underscore the trust because a lot of the conversations that are happening in the committees, as Chase said, maybe it's a chance to think out loud and to float some things, right? And so if you come out of the committee and be like, oh my gosh, teaching and learning is going to implement X, Y, and Z, right? I mean, that's, that violates trust because the, the committee is a conversation and a chance to be able to have that sharing and that conversation. And I do think that they hold a lot, that our administrators hold a lot of respect for us as we hold a lot of respect for our administrators to really be able to have, um, you know, sort of those conversations and understand that the work is being done on an ongoing basis. And our job as board members is to support them and to, and to also give them feedback and, and so that we can create the conditions for this district to be as excellent.
I just wanted to add, um, because the committees are done, you know, and, and it's not open to the public, I just think it's important when we do get to the work sessions and the board meetings that the conversations, some of the conversations that we had, we, you know, discuss the same things, you know, when we have important things to share. I think, you know, there's a tendency, at least when I first started, where we would talk about something in a committee meeting and I would be like, oh, I'm like, you know, I'm convinced this is a great idea, I really support this. And then I just vote yes on it when it comes time without really explaining my thinking. Um, and I just hope people don't get in the habit of doing that, that a lot of this are, again, explaining our thinking and what we learned in the committees is still important to do in the public settings. If that makes sense.
Helps educate the board members that weren't there.
Yes. So they understand that we didn't just, we didn't just rubber stamp everything, like we asked a lot of questions.
Indeed, and, and to add on to that, in the terms of, of no surprises, right? And I probably have said to Dana in a teaching learning committee, at the board's work session, I'm going to ask these three questions. Or, um, at the board, this presentation does not respond to community concerns around this. Will you add it to the presentation and I'm going to ask about it? Sometimes at committee meetings, it might be things like, what are all the questions related to this? That's coming to the board meeting that we need to be asking questions about. And so it might be, yeah, that's a great one and that's a great one. And so we even sort of brainstorm what questions would happen. There was some conversation about how do we do agenda planning? And we do agenda planning in a lot of different ways. One of the ways that we do agenda planning is when we place our committees and the work that is done in the committees because the committees, i.e. the HR committee, is meeting before the works, before the board meeting and the HR committee is talking about, these are the HR documents that are on the board meeting agenda. And these are the things that we're going to talk about and these are some of the questions, the same with, you know, facilities. And so the work of the committee really is also in representation of the board to partner with the administration to figure out, how can we have really productive board meetings? And the way that we have really productive board meetings is by showing our work, work.
Do we get into any kind of overlaps ever? So when I look at finance, um, HR, stakeholder, to me, those are kind of like what, horizontals, right? And your teaching and learning, all those are verticals. So do we ever get into a situation where now I have to bring in two committees together? But then I can't bring in four board members together?
Um. We never bring committees together.
Okay.
There are absolutely times when there are overlaps. So each of you attended as we talked about the professional development train, like the professional development that was at our December work session, right? You, just as it was very, and just as Dana and Stacy stood up together, right? There are things, there will be times when there is a topic that we bring to every committee. So I'll give you another, that's one of them where we talk many times. Talking about the PD table, quite possibly finance is going to be talking about the standard because they got to pay for it, right?
Right.
Um, and another example was in the month of November when we were looking at the high school's schedule change. We did, we will sometimes when we're making big decisions, and then again, this is around having small groups, we made sure that that high school schedule was on the agenda for every.
Every committee.
From high school went to each of the. But then the question was also, finance committee, talk about this a little bit in light of the budget implications. Teaching and learning, talk about this in that. So yes, um, yes, you'd be surprised at how much the horizontals and the verticals all kind of become diagonal because they, because, because teaching and learning is what we do.
Right, right.
And sometimes it's done organically, sometimes it's done.
Great question.
I, I think it's a good time to be able to go back to one of the sheets that, especially for the new board members, you may have seen for the instructional. And being able to kind of hit on, what does that actually mean in practice? What does that look like? When we talk about the board creating the conditions for administration, for us to be able to do our work exceptionally. It's really having that, now it's even about the committees not only as an opportunity to join the dance floor in those moments, but as your own professional development and learning. And we're helping, you know, really try to inform you to the best of our abilities. Everything that you need to know to be able to do your role exceptionally well. When you think about that instructional through line and when you think about the updated strategic roadmap, the, the roadmap has gotten out strategic directions, seven very clear ones that we are now going to be building our very first operational plan. When you think about the operational plan that the board will approve, if you ask to approve in the coming months, and we talked about this when Dan was at working. And we talked about this when Dan was at working with us as well. The goal behind that is to be able to say, how does everything that we're doing in the district tie in to those strategic directions? That is what the board is really overseeing. You have the strategic directions that you're holding us accountable to be able to say, administration, how are you accomplishing these things? The operational plan, then when we start bringing you things, the work sessions or board meetings, and start presenting on that. You're going to see those directly tied to each of the strategic directions in the future to be able to say, here's how we are accomplishing this strategic direction. So it could be something from a building instructional leadership team. It could be something regarding literacy. And then we will show you how that ties in to be able to help us accomplish the bigger goals that we want to 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 really work towards. So a lot of that you're going to start seeing tied in, and then we can start doing multiple months of planning out. And and thinking about that strategically. So it's not, well, what should we talk about this month? It's really intentional and thought out, being able to say, we could lay out nine months in advance to say, here's what we're working on this year. The operational plan, why we ask the board to approve that. Is you're guiding us and saying, here's what we are stamping for your priority work. So you, it's you telling us, this is what the board approves as our priority work. Now, the backside of that, that's essentially us building it for you and then bringing it to you though for your approval. That is also those moments that you can provide us that feedback and being able to say, have you thought about? Or here's something we want to be able to prioritize. I can think about when we started talking about literacy, I think Sheila, you had said, you know what? That's I'm really glad to see literacy is on one of those components as we think about this work moving forward. Cause that's a high priority for not only the district, but the state. And being able to say, that's something we want to get better on and improve. So how do we do that? So a lot of the work will get tied in and then brought, and then we'll be doing presentations over the course of the year. Be able to say, here's how we're meeting different things. So hopefully, if you think about, again, the the board, you can either look at it as foundational or kind of the the top. It's it's not necessarily top down, but you really, it's the board saying to us, here's what we want you to work on. Administration goes and does it on a day to day basis. That way you don't have to think about, oh, oh, my word, who's signing the checks? And have we agreed, you know, do we want the the Best Buy deal? Or do we want to be able to go find it on Amazon? That's, you know, we take care of the day to day. Your job is to hold us accountable to the big picture on all of those things. And that helps keep the board in that seventh range. So hopefully that's helpful. That's the handshake.
Hey, so I I want to be mindful at times. Oh, and and talking about what to expect. Oh, yeah, for sure.
It cannot be just, you know, big words, they are big. But when it comes to certain family who don't see this happening, for example, it's completely different pictures. These big words don't matter. So. I would say, yes, we, I mean, we are working with administration about that. Who to actually come up with ideas how to help out certainly. Cause I mean, arguably, if certain students who are having difficulties, if we help them. I mean, if you think psychologically, they will like, they will feel less, I don't know. But we'll have less behavior problems or something because you will. You can read, you can function.
I would agree 100%, and that's part of what's going to be coming to the board in lots of the operational plan components. So if you look at our strategic directions, number one is the student experience, how are students coming into our buildings? Number two is high quality academic experience. We want high academic outcomes for every student. So what you hear about the the building principles and teaching and learning and all of this is going to be. The student experience that they need to experience. Leadership teams, the building instructional leadership teams, and all of the professional learning that teachers are doing. Really focused on helping improve instruction to get better outcomes for our students. Because we recognize, and what we tell our staff is, we can say we're the best school district in the state. We can say that we are the best school district or one of the best, you know, we'd argue that one of the the top best districts in the entire nation. And we still have work to do because not every student can say that. Cause you can have an individual student who says, yeah, but that's not my experience. And that's what we are working on. Through the public and through the board, to be able to talk about what are those things that we're building, building? Gray level to gray level to help students feel more successful and more accomplished.
Oh, can we put it in the agenda, but it's, I mean, pretty much. I mean, all the things which by inputting it, I mean, that's going to be more not about adult outcome, about us. Let's say somebody is putting a computer class person would like to bring new computers because that's what that person is good at. But it's not about actually students. I mean, computer does not fix if you're a logic, for example. Can it be more measurable, measurable? Was specific, I mean, let's say that first of all, you look at the picture, you analyze and you see the problems. And then you make decision at the board that to grab certain areas. Because you want to. And perhaps certain areas where, for example, you can see that certain, I don't know, criteria, certain students are struggling. Looks like, I mean, if you, we, I saw some analytical things, to be honest, last time I watched online, my notes. But then while we're analyzing it, I'm hoping that we're analyzing it so that you can see, okay, it looks like this particular student are struggling. And then you're changing a specific student's lives. Majority, to be honest, were the rich district. I'm hearing from public, if they don't get from school, they go and hire tutors. And they are not, they are not going to let their kids struggle. Some kids, some parents don't have that money.
I I do appreciate the, Valentina, it's it's so important to to talk about students and to bring students down to the core of what we do, right? And and that is why we all show up every day. Some of our board predecessors talked about wanting to make sure we have the right people on the bus so they can drive to where we need to go. And what I hear you saying is that we have, you know, over 12,000 students that all need to go to really important places. And so how do we as a board make sure? I mean, some of us more than others would like to be working with every single one of those students, right? I think they they have to keep me out of buildings because that's where I would really like to be right now. But we we can't be there as school board members. But we can make sure we're creating the conditions for the students, for the right people to be there. And then I think I also hear you saying, and then we need to have conversations to then hold our administrators accountable to say, and are you getting us the results?
And then why we are giving. When you, I mean, if you're in business environment, you will not survive, you will not survive. You, you'll be out of business or you'll change.
Yes, and absolutely. And as a board, we are making sure that we are constantly coming back to in all that we do. How are we making sure that our students are doing what they, they're getting what they need, right? We need to be the best district for every single family. And that's why we come here and that's what we do. And as we, and I and I appreciate your statement, as we start to think about, oh, what should we do? Or what do they need? Or we start to sit in our adult conversations, right? And this will lead us into our next conversations. We really need to be thinking about what's best for kids. And what's best for kids is that the district is taken care of. And who is responsible for taking care of the district will benefit collectively along with our whole entity. Right? So absolutely. Thank you. And we must always come back to how we're reserving every child. Um, so, and these conversations continue from from a committee standpoint and such. Okay, now we're on the last two items of our agenda. On the last two items, we'll have a two minute break. Thank you. Okay, so we have, we have two items left on our agenda. One item is a conversation around the organizational structure. And one item is a review of our agenda and some details. And so I'm going to ask with the will of the group a little bit, because we could do our last little housekeeping thing. Which is, let's go over the January eighth meeting and kind of talk about what's on the agenda and what that process is. Before we have the conversation, which is a more. Last housekeeping and more. That might be why we'll say, and while our, is let's just go through the. Are we okay with that? We're going to split the last item, five and four on our agenda, just for the note. And we'll just go over the review of the agenda for the January eighth organizational meeting right now. And then we'll talk about the organizational structure. Perfect. Okay, Amy, do you want me to turn it over to you first, or do I need to do it? I'll do it.
I can do one.
Yeah. So it's important to know that our, and you probably want to put this on the agenda, it's the organizational and regular meeting. On our agenda. For the school board. So it's the organizational and regular meeting. And so there are a number of things from, and we kind of bookend in general. We bookend our organizational meeting components along with the regular work of the school. So the agenda was, is in your packet and it's probably subject to agendas are always subject to change and and such before they get posted. And and we're still not posted yet. But they, with this one, it goes a little bit different. So the current chair will, or something, will call the meeting to order. And the first thing that we will need to do is, or that we choose to do, is the ceremonious swearing in and to the new. So this will be a chance where you'll be at the podium, we'll try to get pictures and, you know, have family there and whatever to do your swearing in and your oath of office. Then the election of the new school board members happens next. With the election of the school and and with the election of the new school board. Do you want us to take over from here?
Sure.
Okay.
Because just to back up a tiny bit, when we call to order and the roll is called, we need an acting clerk. So you all will need to figure that out because our dear friend, Benita Lucky, is not available. So, so you'll need to figure out who would like to act as acting clerk. You will have one job to call the roll and I'll provide you with that. And then, then the oaths will happen for the new members. So not, yeah, that's a ceremonial oath. You've all signed your paperwork. And then the election, so the election of the board chair will be chaired by the acting chair. So Sarah will do preside over the chair nominations. Once you figure out who your 2024 chair is, they take over the election of the vice chair, the treasurer, and the clerk. I will just leave you all set. So you just go sit where your nameplate is at the beginning of the evening. And then, once all of the officers are set, I'll rearrange you. So we'll just take a pause and I'll just rearrange you according to where things fall out.
Amy, in your past.
Yes.
Really, the only people that have switched.
Is the chair, yes.
Sort of a chair and, you know, is.
And that's kind of the intention.
The chair and clerk, like everyone else stays where they are.
And that's the intention. And then we'll figure it out for future meetings once every, all the officers are set. And then.
Yep. So so that's the first half of what is organizational in stamp. And although the consent agenda, some of our consent agenda items are routine in nature. As well as some of our consent agenda items are organizational in nature. So if you look on here, the approval of the minutes, the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes, the approval of the monthly financial reports. Are are all there. I think the machine sign, signature resolution, and the annual designations of the calendar year. So item V three, as well as all of the items under D. Those are all kind of organizational in nature. So there's some organizational things that we do every year at the start of a new calendar year. There's some organizational things that we do at the start of a new academic year. You know, where those fall are kind of enormous cadence. And so those are there. I think it's important to point out for new board members, both. So we, under the approval of the consent agenda, under D one, school board standard operating procedures for 2024. We talked earlier this evening about how we're going to update those. That's fine. Let's approve the ones we have and then we will change them and reapprove, right? The same with all of the policies. So you heard a lot about the work of the policy committee and the things that they do. It can be daunting for a new school board member to be like, what? I have to approve every single school board policy as my very first action at the school board? And I've never read every single school board policy, right? It really, you are just affirming that we have a policy handbook, right? And that these are there. And 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 you understand that the work of the the policy committee continues on and moves forward. And so it feels really big and daunting. It it does have a purpose, which is just to make sure that in this. There's a few things that we have to do that we can't meet on certain days and whatever that are set. Do you want to give us any information about that pledge waiver and what it is?
Yes, there's a state statute requiring recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. And over the years, there is an option for school boards to choose to waive the statutory requirement. There's a good explanation, narrative explanation on the agenda sheet that will be part of that. I think in a nutshell, a couple of reasons that we do that is that in theory and technically, in the event that the last day of the week. Happens to be called as a snow day and that's the day that you read the pledge. You play your out of compliance because you didn't do the weekly reciting of the pledge. And I think in past, there may have been some philosophical perspectives about mandating allegiance and concerns about that. And even though we do the Pledge of Allegiance in our schools, I think that both would be the primary reason over the years that we've done that. So we've done that, I believe, every year I've done here. I think it was a practice, the place where I came in. So it just gives you a little bit of the background of that. So it's not like we're not reciting these things.
This isn't about us doing the pledge. This is about our students.
Yeah, this is. And it's pretty common, if you've been there, you know, as a parent volunteering or whatever the case might be.
So just to confirm, just to confirm, when you waive this statute of law, not waiving the fact that it happens in our district. We're waiving the mandate that tells us that we're going to do it on a certain day so that we have the flexibilities, but that we have those kind of things. So we're, we're keeping a practice and we're just giving ourselves some flexibility to do a practice. And not tying our teachers into this, right? Cause I can imagine too, if if I'm a teacher and I'm trying to get out for a, you know, we've got testing or a field trip or something else. And I'll say, we'll do the pledge on Tuesday instead of Wednesday. If my school board hadn't waived the pledge, I might have had to do it on, I might have had to do it on the Tuesday. Like I say, we're just going to do a pledge on Tuesday. And then so.
Thank you. Most buildings, it's read over the, yeah, and then the buildings often, we then read it over the PA. So everybody does it at the same time.
If I could just jump in, in in general consent agenda items, I know we talked about this, Valentina. Any of those, and the the board chair will read it at the beginning. But any of the consent agenda items, should a board member choose to want to discuss them at all? Can be requested to be pulled out and they'll move down to other board action. So if there's something in the consent agenda that you did want to ask about, that you, you know, didn't get an answer from administration beforehand. You can ask for that item to be moved. And then you can, as a board, discuss it under other board action.
I can say I would like this to be moved for.
I don't, I was like, you've memorized.
So, right, so I'm going to say a couple of things. So it's, yeah, so the language is, you know, consent agenda items are considered routine in nature. And will be approved in one motion unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which case the consent agenda. And you were, and so, and so I think what would happen typically, what the board chair then says is there, is there a motion to approve it? And you were, and so, um, and so I think what would happen typically, what the board chair then says is there, is there a motion to approve it? Someone might make a motion. If you want an item removed, you might say something like, I'm asking for an item, you know, I. Chair, I'm asking for this item to be removed.
Have it is removed for discussion.
It, yes. Um, but following a line of. No surprises at the board table is really important and wanting to make sure that every conversation that we have at the board table is a productive conversation. It's really important if you choose, if you think you're going to have an item removed from the consent agenda, that you give a heads up in advance. And we do encourage a lot of these because they are routine in nature. Um, and there's usually, as Dr. Anderson did with the waving of the pledge. The question would be, you know, if you have a question about something, first start by making a contact to the board chair. And the administrators and say, hey, I have a question about this. Can I get some more information? And this one, probably unlike some of the things that we talked about in these, if you get your question answered around this routine thing, probably doesn't make sense to remove it from the consent.
I don't have an.
Yeah, sure. Right. Yeah.
Before every meeting, everything, Amy posts everything on board. You will be able to see every single word that you were up to date before the meeting. And so.
It's required to be posted by Friday. I, we have a really strong practice of having them, yeah, the agenda. Uh, we have a strong practice of them being posted. By Thursday and all the attachments are set by Friday. And I will, and I always email the board and let you know once everything is. In there. But yes, but I mean, if you had, you know, weekend plans and I I completely understand what you're saying.
There are times when, um, literally, we may not finalize some financial things until Monday. And it oftentimes works with bond, uh, sales or other things that may actually transact on that Monday of the board meeting. So there are some times when. If it's gonna be later. And also there are other times when we will send out preliminary drafts, uh, by email as an attachment. It just indicate here's the latest draft of this. It'll continue to evolve through the weekend. I do this sometimes with some of the things that I do. Um, it'll continue to evolve through the weekend and we'll get to the final version. There is really no requirement to provide attachments prior to starting a meeting. So, um. We always try to get it to you as soon as we can, but there are times when, you know, it gets into late Friday or even on a Saturday sometimes.
Yes, that's fair.
And this is also why we have metrics, right? And so a strong thing is also to say, it at least in the first few months. It probably makes sense to have a phone call or a conversation with your mentor on a Friday, Saturday or Sunday before the board meeting to say. This is the item, these are all the things on the agenda. Cause it might even be something like. You don't necessarily have all the attachments, but you have the agenda posted. And so then you're like, you know, what is these in these university agreements? What are these? And what do I have to do with that? Like what? And your mentor will say, we really have no role over them whatsoever. Teaching and learning and H R reviews them all. We just. It's a form. So there are, so having those conversations with your mentor in advance of that is a really.
Yeah, mental mostly.
You, you know, the difference between like the consent agenda items and then the other stuff. Those ones we don't normally have a discussion about, but like other stuff that we vote on. Well, that's why I mentioned, and that's why I mentioned it just because we had a conversation about it, but I just want to make sure. That you feel like you can, if you want to.
There is no discussion of consent agenda items unless the board members so request, in which case the item will be removed and considered. Sorry. Anyway, so, um, so they are in in consent agenda items are always roll call. Because there's typically financial things that are happening with them and they are, and you'll see that some of them are resolutions. Again. We're not putting, there's, the administration will not put anything in the consent agenda that's a gotcha for a board member. Everything that's in the consent agenda is really a routine in nature kind of. So, um, yeah, that's what.
And real quickly, I'll just put a reminder into this. I was reminded of this myself a little while ago. Very kind thing to do is to get your questions to our team prior to the meeting, because here's what happens when we get questions kind of out of the blue. I send a message that we're looking at. And what will happen with time is our leadership team will start by imagining all of the possible questions that could come up. And craft answers for them in their minds, of which ninety-nine point nine percent are never going to be. Not efficient and our team spending their time prepping for questions that are. You know, feel free to send those questions in prior to the board meeting. We want you to understand and know what you're voting on and acting on. Um, you probably don't know, need to know each and every fine detail, nor would you want to, I don't think, but. Um, if you do have questions, it really is a kind thing to do. In advance. It's another incentive for us to get the agendas out and the materials out as soon as we can, because if we should.
And if you're reviewing it on a Sunday night, you can send the question on a Sunday night. You, it's not that you're expecting Dr. Anderson to respond to you on a Sunday night or Dana to respond to you. Get it. They're gonna come to work on Monday and they're gonna spend a lot of time preparing for the board. And so the more kind of questions are given, the better. So, yeah, reviewing that information, sending them in. Um, again, we want our board members to give us the best possible answers because we want. Or we want the administrators to give us the best possible answers. And the administrators want to give us the best possible answers. So that's the consent agenda, um, which will contain both kind of routine and non-routine and organizational stuffs. Next comes reports from organizations. And I don't think we have any, there's been no state championships, so I don't think we have any of that kind of stuff. Um, so reports from organizations, recognitions, the student spotlight presentation, audience opportunity to address the board. And all the administrative reports, reports and recommendations, so items five through nine, those are all again, items related to our regular board meeting. Looks like there might be a couple votes in that, right? Finance reports probably are informational only. You will always know if you, when you read the packet, what you will be being asked to vote on, because it'll say at the bottom of that agenda sheet, the recommended action is. And then you will see what that recommended action is. As we hearken back to the conversations around committees and what the work of the committee does. And oftentimes committees need help to prepare the agenda for the board meeting. If you are looking at an item, let's say you're looking at one of the H R items and you're like, I wonder what the conversation was about that. You can call. Or and say, did y'all talk about the. You know, or go call, did you all talk about this item under H R? And then you can, and then you can get that answer from the H R committee. Yes, indeed, we talked about this. This was the conversation. What are your questions? Right? And then maybe you can answer your questions and maybe they'll say, that's a great one to ask at the board meeting. Send a note to the board chair and Stacy and Chase to tell them your answer. Does that make sense?
It does.
So use your peers and your resources to seek the information that you need. We don't want anyone to be surprised or humbled or. You know, in any way.
Yeah, and I think that that'll help. I was actually going to request that because if there are any items that are coming up for voting. They might have been discussed, you know, several times in the working session, but new members won't know it. So it may make sense just to pick up phone. Talk to chair and and make sure you have all questions answered. So makes sense. Sure. Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
And we will move to item number ten, um, again, which is other board action. Um, and this is why, uh, and this is another organizational piece. Like we said, we bookend the two. And that is really around, we, we read the committee structure so that our community knows. And so it's lots of talking on behalf of the board chair to just going through. All the things and then we really just affirm those days. And then we affirm the appointments, right? Um, and then our conversation was, you know, that our compensation is staying, same as we are. Um, it doesn't seem like there will be board reports, but that'll be, does anyone have any idea? I mean, I think we said we have no board reports in this one because we have a lot of party talking anyway. And there's an international championship football game. Um, but anyway, um. So anyway, um, and then you're. Questions about Monday night?
No, this is really helpful for us.
And I'll continue to provide it for work sessions. I think that's. To the best of my ability, things can be added and removed and changed, but at least a heads up, we'll do my best.
And the last thing about that is that there's something. Every June, we talk about this or every, you know, treatment taxation is every December or all of that. So you kind of know that cadence, some of the other things are, this is coming up and it's a good deal. Okay, so that lead, that is that. And so now we go back to the twenty twenty-four organizations. So, um, there have been kind of a couple, I don't quite exactly even know how to approach the conversation. Um, so I'm gonna do some lead in and then I'm gonna open it up for that. But there were, um, in reflections, um, after the meeting. Um, as well as kind of. Um, our leadership structure and how that happened. Additionally, there were, it was a very long and drawn out process. Some things that we did, I E. Not sticking together and asking people to leave the room, um, having some conversations around people are are not best practice. And how we should have done our work. And so as we reflect on what happens at the organizational meeting next year, I think we'll want to do that. Um, and and make sure that we are always adhering to best practice. Um, and there was some conversations about what would happen in January, right? And because there were some concerns or some upping. Um, there was a potential that there could be some, as there always can be, right? It is always possible to. We call for nomination three times for every. It's always possible for things to change in January. And having a strong start, having a unified front, having us all look like we have our X together when we sit behind our podium on January eighth is of utmost importance. Um, when we go back to Valentina's statement about what is best for kids, it's best for kids when the grownups are working together and moving about. So to that end, this is unprecedented. Um, it's certainly not the place that we wanted to be. Um, and it felt really important to have an additional conditional conversation. So that is where we loved it. There there was, and so that is why we are here today. Um, some people may have reflections on that, some people may have things. And so I guess I will just open it up. Before I talk anymore and see and let people sort of share.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You, again, just now you said that we had that December fourth meeting with. A list of conversation. I don't remember hearing that. I, what I heard was, you know, this is the. Nobody can run on January eight. This is not a financial. So that is beyond that. But I don't know if anybody has heard that we would have another conversation.
No, we never said anyone heard we had a conversation. I said there were additional considerations. Though I'll own one, right? Like I walked out of that meeting and said, gosh, I'm not so certain I should be vice chair. I think maybe I should be a different role. I think maybe I should be clerk. Like I don't, I have all of these. So I will own here. I had additional converse considerations leaving that meeting saying. How am I, are we gonna be our best self? So so it's so, and then I said, this meeting. Is unconventional, right? We haven't had that before. It doesn't change anything that we said at that meeting, which is the votes don't happen until the votes happen. This meeting does not disqualify a person's ability to self nominate or nominate another person for any position on Monday. So I just want to be crystal clear. We are not voting on anything and we are not making any decisions. And it is hugely important that we have a strong start in January. And that we have people prepared to assume the roles and make decisions. And it's hugely important that we make decisions about the leadership of our body. And the work that we do together based on skills, based on experience, based on. All of the things in a collective unified front. So we are inviting this conversation now to begin to start to happen.
Um, I, I was one of the. I left feeling her December fourth thing. Like we haven't landed the right spot. It felt like we didn't put all of them together in the right way. And then I started to also feel like there were certain conversations that we didn't have at our board table. And I couldn't figure out. I still can't figure out what exactly it was. I just was feeling like not everything was set in the board. Um, yes, you guys know, I really wanted to be vice chair. And the reason was, is I was hoping to build into that chair role. Um. Realized that this board is different. I still really feel strongly that. We should lead into things by stepping into them. I think that's been a really great precedent in our district. And I think that has allowed for such good relationships with our administrators. I think it's allowed for excellence in operations. I think it's made for great efficiency and effectiveness. But if this board is okay with the director going directly into the chair position, then I would like to be considered for chair. Um, and I know that this is again, totally out of, you know, not traditional and but we're doing a lot of things that are not traditional. And so I'd like to be considered. And I think that a lot of my board colleagues felt that I would have been a good choice. And, um, I think in. In the hopes that we could stay on that track of some of the traditions that have kept us so. You know, doing such efficient and effective work, I kind of left myself in that vice chair role. So if that's, you know, if Sarah's not gonna be at the table for that vice chair role, then I would like to be considered for chair. Um, and I don't know how we approach this right now. I'm not sure how we go about it, um, but I am planning on. Self nominating unless somebody else would like to nominate on that.
Well, when we left the meeting on the floor, um. It was going to be that you were gonna be chair. I was going to be vice chair, but because I wanted that continuity. I asked Sarah to be vice chair. And then we closed it at the meeting. So remember that was the last thing. It was, you know what? I don't, I don't. Or you said, I don't think I should be vice chair. I'll be treasurer. And then I said, I will be vice chair. And then upon my, and then upon my further consideration, I said, I, it is not, there's a number of reasons why. With the current setup and schedule as it was, that I did not want to be vice chair. And so there was that, but that was something that wasn't. So that is one of the, I mean, when I said there were multiple considerations about why we are here. There are multiple considerations about why we are here. And that is one of them.
So then another add-on for me, as I speak about myself. Is I will go into any job and I will knock the socks off. Okay? Now, for me, into treasury, not having been on the finance committee for a year is a big lift right now. I can make the lift. I'm not saying I can't. But it is a huge lift. And I think that there were relationships built over the last year. And I think that things were going down a particular track for that year. That should be considered in how we set this whole puzzle together. Um, again, it's about skills, it's about relationships, it's about a multitude of things. It's not just about who can do the job today. There's a, there's a whole lot of pieces that have to go get put together. And so that's, that's really where I'm coming from is I felt as I left that room, I was like, you, you didn't quite land in the right spot. And then we made another couple switches and it just, it doesn't feel right to me. And so I want to sit at this table and I want to have a really open and honest. Conversation with my board. Conversation with my board colleagues. And so that's, that's really where I'm.
I would have.
I was just gonna say, any change at chair level.
I mean, it was all switched up. It was all switched up. Right? Like from one where you left on the board, it got switched up after that too. So it's not.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
I think because we're all very new except for Sarah and like whatever will any of us are in, it's going to feel.
I just want to ask kind of a technical question. So we received an email a few days ago saying there's going to be a special. And then it had been a special meeting had been like.
Requested.
Requested, yeah. So I was just kind of taking a question of, you know, can one member call a meeting? What is the, the certain?
That's an excellent question. That's a very excellent question. It is not precedent or practice for one member to. So one, any one member can request that an item be discussed by the board as a whole. So let me back that up. Any one member can, it can request that an item be discussed with the board in the whole. If a one member requests that the item is discussed as a whole, then. Leadership in collaboration with the superintendent and the administration would then say, how do we have that discussion, right? And so in general, for the most part, because we have a cadence of regular meetings and work sessions. Those items can then be added on to an agenda for a regular meeting or a work session, right? And so the way that this one ended up to a special meeting is because it is related to our next regularly scheduled meeting. So we didn't have any other meetings between, that we didn't have any other meetings. Between the time that the item came up as an issue, which is in this was an item. This is the second item on our organizational meeting. Again, this is, so, so yes, so the answer is can a board member requested an item go on a meeting agenda? For sure. If the board, if something is happens and it's timely and there's not an ability to have the meeting, the work session or the regular meeting. Then there needs to be a conversation about it. And in this one, there was a conversation that said. Do we, and so then when we have the conversation, you look at how does it align with our board practice? How does it align with our values? How does it align with the work that we need to get done? And so in that realm, what this happened to is that we have a standing board practice that says we'd like to. Not have any surprises at the board table. And having surprises at the board table of a board colleague, if someone's saying, I'm going to self nominate. And throw this process when we made a big deal of saying we're not, we really want to have a strong start. And going back to the fact that we have a brand new board. And we need our community to think that our board has our act together. Because we do have our act together. We have the potential to be a very high functioning board. To have one of our first voting acts not look very collaborative. Doesn't necessarily give us the strong start that I think we decided we had the main decision to call this meeting. Is what's in the best interest of everyone. So is this unprecedented? Absolutely. Is it a place that any of us want to be? I'll speak for myself. Never in a million years and I hope it never happens again. And is it important to have the conversation now? Yeah.
And then just to just to follow through on this specific, so like who, uh, not challenge me or anything like that. Like I assume you, it was, you were, um, consulted for having this meeting. I just want to proceed really like who is it that has to agree on?
The request was made before the end of the year last year. So the request was made to the superintendent, the chair and the vice chair.
So because we're, we're now at six oh two. To proceed, do we want to give everybody a chance to say something if they want to? And then are we trying to come to a consensus again through like an anonymous vote? Are we going to just say you're going to nominate yourself at the meeting and then see what happens then or?
We're not voting on anything, right?
Taking the temperature. Temperature. I apologize. That was the wrong terminology.
Why don't we have a conversation? I mean, we just dropped, I think, let's do one at a time. This night needs to not go on forever. So, um, but. But so we can take a temperature, right? Some of you are hearing some of this for the first time. Um, so I think, wait, go ahead.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? And I think we talked about it in our last meeting too, but there is no precedence around how long. Certain, certain person can hold the position, right? So let's say today, one person is chair. Next year, same person can be vice chair, vice chair can be chair, right? So there is no such precedence. Is that accurate?
Happen every year, but. The rules say. The rules say new things have, new things can happen every year. And we have created a district practice as we go back to the conversation around committees and the sense of trust. And that working relationship, right? And the learning that comes along with, what does it mean to be a finance member versus a treasurer, right? Or what does that mean? Or figuring out the script of the board meeting for a board chair. It's really clunky, especially from a chair perspective, to have a new chair every year. Like we, you could have her next because. We're a continuous learning organization, guys. And the more we move it and to watch it is not the same as to do. But no, there's no, there's no rule.
Yeah, but I mean, I know you kind of answered my next question because that's what I wanted to understand. Um, I mean. The more I hear as a new member, we are obviously seven, team of seven, right? And we work closely with administration. We have great committees, the, the whole cadence, right? So that's where I was wondering, how much do you really need time to build that relationship to be chair, right? Okay.
You do, um, for a couple of things. So I think if we, well, let me rephrase that. What, so. When we look at what a chair does, right? If we can talk about that in a minute. What a chair does is a chair is someone who holds the organizational piece of it, right? A chair is one of seven. So as a chair, you have no more power than. But you do hold organizational things, right? And so when we think about skill sets. And what people are able to do or not able to do, right? Like if we. Then the chair is sort of the person that holds sort of the big picture of things, that maybe runs conversations. That summarizes things, that stays in communication and contact with the superintendent and the associate superintendent. That, that, you know, we, we're going to talk about emails and how we're going to address that and whatever. So I, but you know, the, the chair is the person that speaks on behalf of the board, right? And so we have a chair that sees a big picture of things and that is able to partner with the administration, be a really strong listener. And work to represent the, the district in those speaking things, but also be, you know, really making sure that they are working in tandem. With the superintendent all the time. So it's kind of that organizational flow. That's one of the reasons why. I, I will also say that's one of the reasons why we sometimes do a vice chair to a chair. Because when you're sitting in front of a stage and now all of a sudden like someone pulls something off the consent agenda. And then you're like, wait a minute, I got to think about this. And you haven't sat behind the board table to know kind of what that pressure is once you get behind the microphone and the camera. But there's a little something there. And so that ability to think at your feet and that ability to sort of navigate and, and as a chair. You, when I started out as chair. And I've, um, I've had, I wrote every single word and sometimes I didn't. And then if I didn't say every single word, it was like, oh, I kind of needed to. And then you start to do, and now I have a very small, you know, I don't currently have anything. I just have notes of if this happens, then this happens. And if this happens, then this happens. So that vice chair training to a chair, but we're not going to have that this year, right? So that's off the table already, but it's just to, have you been like. How do you know that?
Yeah.
So, um, you may understand. Uh, you would like to be a vice chair. I would like to share.
I think we have to redo the whole thing, starting from the top.
Right.
It also seems to be honest. I can imagine, I mean, we spend so many hours and then, uh, let's, let's, let's say that I nominate myself. And we discuss six hours and all. And personally, this gave you that. And all of a sudden we're changing. How, how that person supposed to come and work? Uh, I mean, what kind of trust is this? That's, that's why I wanted to have. So that it's not just something that popped up last anniversary, that it's not something where I'm calling each person individually and saying, I plan to do this. I really wanted to come and have that discussion so that we do build that pressure. You'd like us to be here. So if, um, let's say that, um, um. However, we vote that beyond of the law. If you will not get it, you will self nominally. But we spent. Can I tell you though, as, as I, as I went back on that conversation, we did spend a lot. You did. And I. Coming back to what you said earlier in our conversation. We didn't, I don't think we were thinking about how, how we're putting our pieces together. Will impact our teachers, will impact our students. So the more efficient setup we have on our board. What are outcomes will come out of it for our students. And so that's what I went back to. I was like, is it really worth having this conversation again? Because I know this is a big conversation to have. For me, it is worth it because my kids are in schools. And your kids are in schools. And so it is worth having the conversation to make sure that we have put all of our pieces. We are all incredibly smart, incredibly capable, really well read people. I'm just hoping, well, why are we putting together pieces to make it all fit as best way possible? That's all it is. Well, does anybody else have any, I mean, without a temperature, is there any other conversation?
Yeah. I would like to say, I think both of you would be excellent in the position. Um, I feel like my hope for the future. That in whatever happens, that as a board. We really lean in on giving each other the benefit of the doubt. And I'm giving the administration the benefit of the doubt. And, you know, I, again, we have, we have a lot of new people on this board and I just. Want to start from a place, I know we don't know each other well and we have to trust. We start with giving each other the benefit of the doubt. The trust will come later. Again, with all the relationships. Um, I have high confidence in Milland. I feel like. This feels a lot like moving the goalposts, honestly, that we had our December meeting. How it's been done forever. We came to, you know, we figured out what we wanted to come forward with and now things are changing again. So I'm very uneasy with this process. That is all I would like to say.
But to me, I think you asking for the meeting is fair. I think when we ended the meeting last time, it wasn't the final decision. We clearly called out like, hey, things can change. And obviously we'll talk about it on it. Um, wholeheartedly, I think I appreciate this meeting, um, because I think it gives us opportunity to. Talk openly and not be in front of, right? So I think totally justified. Um, that being said, I think we, I totally agree with Valentin. I think we spent hours. And we went through different options and finally we had to ask folks to leave the room and voted and so on, right? So again, I wanted to be respectful of everybody's time and efforts that have gone in. Now, that being said, again. In wholeheartedly, I would definitely nominate you for vice chair role. But again, that's what I read because when we got out of that meeting, it was very clear that you wanted to be vice chair and. However, the things came up either that day or I think in next one or two days. Personally, I was quite surprised because I heard very loud and clear that you wanted to be vice chair. So again. Everybody's capable. And again, as you said, no doubt in anybody's mind that, hey, can you do it? Can you not do it? But again, in, in my opinion, I would nominate you for vice chair. I think that will keep most of the pieces in place, just based on. Okay, alright, I spoke. In connection then, but yeah.
Can I, can I just please say something? I heard it in the December. Don't, don't get me wrong, no offense meant here. Hearing some personal feelings that people are running on. I don't have any, I don't have kids. Even if I did, I would not really be part of the kids, right? And that, that pains me a little bit, that, that we, we are bringing. Personally, she is in this very important role. And I, I think, I think. Right, but you just said I have kids and she has kids and I have, I have more interest in doing things. You know, that, that does not mean that I don't have, right? I don't have kids, but. Okay, that's the message I got. Sorry, yeah, okay.
Yes, nominated. For me, was it. And I will not be. Then we got an email with changes and now we're changing. Yeah, so I, I personally feel like. When you are capable, I don't have to be valiant. I'm going to just, um. But again, but sorry to interrupt you, but again, it's not the overall. Getting all the pieces together. So we were talking about. Then it's the treasurer position. So again, it's all the pieces and all the work that we're doing. And spreading the work out so that it's not all on one or two people, but really making sure that we're a balanced board. That's how I'm looking at it.
I would like to ask a question. Uh, because you know, going over the kind of rules and regulations of the board, I want to clarify this. You know, that's very important, you know, um, you know, treasurer, um, and the clerk not necessarily.
No, no. No, the vice chair doesn't have to be the treasurer.
The state statute says that the board, the president and treasurer do not have the board, have the board. They can be appointed from the community. Uh, for example, you can appoint people caring as treasurer. So I can show you that.
From our board organization and our standard operating procedures, which we all align with, right? The officers of the board of education as established by law, the chair, the clerk and the secretary. Vice chair. So, um, so what is your, so these are our standard operating procedures and absolutely statute jumps that. Tell me where your question is down.
Oh, I was just, you know, if, if, I would just to kind of make people. You know, how he does negotiate has the, um, you know, experience that where. I consider, you know, someone else for that.
Let's be clear. I think I heard, do, I want to speak to you.
I think it is not about.
Or comfort or.
So that we have a balanced position that the board in order to best support our administration. That's where my mindset is.
I'm going to go back a minute to, um, the conversation. Conversations in our committees that's that. And what is the goal? We also talked about the role of me in building the relationships with the, with the S L T, right? And we talked a lot about it from our perspective. So I talked about how I build a relationship with them, or I build a relationship with me, right? But we also have conversations around how our S L T members build relationships with us. And and Chase talks about how they, how they present information and the way that cadence goes and the way that they do. And so, one of the things that we know is that our committee member, or in our committees, our S L T members also look at working with their board members. So, and we have had, you know, and so when we think about, I think what I hear Heidi saying, and I'm not certain about it. But what I hear Heidi saying is that she started to think about skills and abilities as we are bringing a lot of new. Onto the school board right now, and we are asking administrators to navigate a lot of new on the school board right now. Where are the places that we can seize and hold experience? Where are the places that we can seize and maximize and leverage relationships? Where are the places that we can have more consistency in this face of inconsistency? And I think what I hear Heidi saying is, as she reflected on it, or what I heard from what Heidi said, and I could be very wrong, is as she reflected on it. A change in treasurer is a bringing of an inconsistency, because she was not on the finance committee last year. Whereas, I mean, whereas. A continuation of a, of a board member in the treasurer position. He's second to me, so that's what I think I hear you saying. But more importantly, what I hear you saying, and then I'm gonna, and now I'm gonna speak for myself, is the conversation got really unbalanced. Or not, what I think I also hear saying is the conversation got kind of unbalanced when we were talking about chair. Because the conversation moved to Millen wants to be chair and Sarah wants to be chair. And here are all the reasons why Sarah should be chair, and here are all the reasons why Millen should be chair. And so it just, and so, that Heidi got shut out, and it more became a Sarah and a Millen. It also became a conversation that included voices that were less, that were more than even what's at this board table of the community wants. The board elects their leaders based on who the board think is best suited for the job, and in the end, we're all doing the job. It's the person that that administers it in those positions or works with the administrator. I don't want to be chair, I don't want to be vice chair. I heard you all loud and clear and that is fine, I want to be clerk, so that is off the table. And so, but what we think about, and so now we, I, I wonder if our conversation is around skill sets. So we have different skill sets for three different roles, right? And, um, so that's where, and it feels like from newness, right? If a vice chair is really just learning the roles of a chair, and the chair is doing things and the treasurer is doing things. And we have three different roles, and sort of three people are returning, two of whom have two years of experience and one of them has one. Do we, we're, we're starting to think of our conversation around these two leadership positions in experience. So in my mind, I'm envisioning this as a, as a conversation around.
Can I ask you a question? Forgive me if it comes off as rude. I guess I'm just trying to understand this, we're talking about experience, what do you feel you're more at? Give me this question sounds very, very blunt, but both you and Millen have been directors for the last two years. And I guess I'm just trying to understand how. Millen going from, someone going from. Record to chair.
It's not about who's more apt or more not apt, the, the aptness would have been to have somebody in the chair position who. Has experience to teach vice chair, but we've taken that off the table. So what I'm trying to do now is it's not just about the chair position. It's about treasurer, it's about clerk, it's about. It's about all of these. Being together in a way that creates a boost for our administrators as well. So our administration is running extraordinarily lead, and any one of them will tell you this. If a relationship is already built, that takes a long. It will be an extraordinarily heavy lift for me to come into the treasurer role. Anybody who has not been on finance, it will be an extraordinarily heavy lift for them to come in as chair of finance. And to be treasurer in this year, given all of the task containment. And all of the changes that are happening around the district and the decisions that are to come, especially for. So it's going to be an extraordinarily heavy lift, if we can create those efficiencies, I think that's in the best interest of our board.
If I can declare, ask a clarifying question. Are you saying?
No, that would be better. I'm not speaking on behalf of you.
No, your opinion is that you have the skills as treasurer.
I am saying somebody who is on the finance committee. I'm not speaking on behalf of you.
Argument, like what, what your argument actually is.
I, I actually gave my.
I know which pieces, though.
Yeah, I mean, key people at this table have been on finance for the past year.
Millen and Sarah, okay. Right, so you, one of them is treasurer would be the best for continuity and. Again, just trying to clarify, because I don't do well without very direct statements.
Make a comment about them, this question about director to chair, director to chair, last time, and then when we met, and December fourth. I handed out a piece of paper with my experience, I hope you saw at least some of it. I have a lot of experience from before being chair, being president, so it's not like I've not been, not done that. I do have a lot of experience, you know, in this specific role, I have managed a student council. Two hundred thousand students in it, on it, representing hundred and thirty colleges, I was the president for one. And if you, if you look at what happens in India, how, how things are run, very political, very. Very dangerous, very, you know, things that I have been able to deal with, I worked well with the vice chancellor. So I have worked with administration, and, yeah, so experience may not be directly from, from this role. But another question I have is, we talked about succession planning. There, there was, that was never a consideration last year, last December, especially when I ran for treasurer. It was so important that we look at succession planning, why was I defeated in that election?
I think, I want to be clear about that, because I think, and we can, I mean, what we said was, you said you wanted to be treasurer. And everyone said, great, and Cheryl said, okay, I will meet with you, I will teach you how to be treasurer, Dee Dee said, I will move you in. So there was, and there was lots of, I mean, there was lots of conversations around when Melinda's treasurer. And when that happens, and so I think everyone's in their mind was thinking. So that, that was there.
Okay, first, number one, nobody taught me how to be treasurer this last year, nobody, not Cheryl, Monty, nobody. So number one, that is, that did not happen.
I think I heard Cheryl say out loud to you, Melon, if you have any questions about being treasurer, I'd be happy to meet with you.
Apart from that. When we met for the first time, in a few months ago, I specifically asked you, you want to run for chair? He said, no, I don't have, I'm, I'm busy, I'm very interested in telling questions.
But I actually said, what I'm eating, because in the summer, and there were other things going on. As I said, we will have a new board at the table, and I'd like to sit down and discuss that.
That's not what I, what I heard, but anyway, so, okay. And, and, and on the December, at the December fourth meeting, I heard you tell that, you want to be vice chair because you, because you want to eventually become chair. So what I'm saying is now you are going back and forth from vice chair to treasurer to chair. You can, you can do that, you're allowed to do that, you will run, nominate yourself on January eight, which is fine. Anybody else here can nominate himself again, if he wants, then can, any, Paras can, to not try to. Put me in a, in a hole. You know, I'm not saying forcibly, but try to convince everybody that I would be better as a treasurer, because my goal is to become chair. And I think I can do a very good job of chair as well. Because I just asked you that, and you did not answer the question, so you are trying to sell, you will not try to say.
I'm trying to make sure, I'm actually trying to do the exact opposite. I'm trying to make sure that there's a conversation that happens so that it's not Heidi dictating any one or two things. I'm actually trying to do the exact opposite of that. And I do think it's slightly unfair to say that we're moving the goalposts if somebody else is going for himself now. Why? Because Melinda and I have been in this position before. And it was, and, and the board was supportive of me being M S B A, at running for M S B A. And it was okay that Melinda ran, and we have a great relationship, so I think it's unfair to flip that, I mean, it's just, like, let's.
At that time, I was told that this is not a good thing by two people, chair and vice chair, both in the meeting that you and I had with Sarah. Linda had had with me. It was always suggested that it is not a good appearance, the optics are not good if two people members of the same. Board run for the board director in M S B A. You are working well, it's all fine, it's nothing, nothing has happened, so there is nothing wrong with two people on the same board running. So I welcome you to run on January eighth. So, you know, I'm okay with it, okay.
So, so I will just say, you're right, the optics of that in M S B A is fine, and, and this is what's leading us to that too. I had a dozen, and I know my colleagues had a dozen people come up to me at that leadership conference and said. What's going on in my Zeta? Why do you have two people running against each other? So, actions matter, right? And that's why we're having this conversation today, and again, we're not gonna, we, we don't need to, everyone can do what they want to do on January. Um, I think that it is important to think about. What we, what, what we want to put forward, right? There are, I think, as, as us, as we think about it, there are personalities that come into play too, right? And as we think about, each one of us have personalities and leadership personalities, right? Who knows if I have a leadership personality to be a great chair? I was, I have been the, not I was a great chair, I have been the chair. Some people might have thought I had a great personality to be the chair, I could summarize things and I could go through. Some people might think that I had a bad personality, chair, or I didn't have some of the skill sets that I needed to have, right? Maybe I wrote emails that were too, that were too vague, right? And so if we think about how do we maximize skill sets, and who's coming to the table, and what sort of things do we do? Do each of us think about, about that, just as, and, and who we think would be that, that leadership piece? Or that secondary piece of vice chair, or that treasurer piece, or the, the organizational piece? So it is important to have the conversation in person. It is important to say that when, whatever the vote is taken, it's when the vote is taken, that everyone moves forward in that way. Um, it is important to say that it's, it's not about the people, right? And, and that we are a team and a collaboration. And the goal is to have ultimately a really strong start. And however that strong start happens.
It's not like, well, I, I just, I would not be applying brand new car and even the. Jersey and saying, oh, I know that you passed the test, go and have fun, you can, you can drive. Here, uh, looks like hearing you guys, administration is wonderful, very supportive. So it's not like a teenager will be, uh, passed, uh, to, uh, try to learn to drive while just passing the test, so to speak. Looks like there is gonna be support, what, what I felt like. I wanted you, you tried to be the, um, council. Yes, it does experience matter, it matters, but if a relationship doesn't work, it doesn't matter how much one person has experience. I suspect it's not gonna work out, it might be working against each other. And, um, let's say, uh, one year I'll be in finance, for whatever reason I decided to run. I mean, it will be another comedian, and then next time, I'm, I'm gonna be running for treasurer. Uh, against, uh, Paris, for example, there is no way I would gain within even one year or two years being in finance, uh, committee. Uh, the knowledge what Paris have, for example. So, yes, even though Paris, uh, do not have the experience at the school board, let's say that yeah, maybe I, I'm already. I, I would be willing to choose, uh, Paris for that, uh, for that, um, position. Because I feel strongly that he is much more better with numbers, with finances. And somebody else who might have served the finance, uh, committee at school board for two years or whatever years. And another thing, maybe, to be honest, given a chance, it's, and I hear that we, we should have continued, uh, can. Relationship and all, it's not like we're putting bright new people into that kind of position that please. You know, it's not like, uh, what I was gonna say, if, if we'll choose different people. Had experience in different, I mean, in their private lives, uh, have, have a will. For example, I don't have a will to run for this position, no way, no how. Uh, but this person is willing to do, willing to learn. I, I feel strongly that, um, both of you can do it, and we. But at that, during that meeting, my understanding was so that, um, on the eighth, it's not becoming like messy discussion, right? But that's, that's what we did, and. We, at that time, we already came up with, uh, where I, I mean, we collectively came up. Uh, with what we would like. Or, how, what we would like to see on the eighth. And another thing, I feel like if somebody knew, or not even knew, actually, somebody is coming to the position, maybe that person. Said that it is that, unless we tried, we will not, we will not know, and that person is elected only for finance here. We, if things do not work out, uh, we probably will not make, uh, will make sure that we will not.
We got a big year to have things not work out, I'm sorry to interrupt you with that, but we got a really big year to have things not. So in terms of leadership and organization, it's a big year.
But I feel like, I mean, you, um, Millen has, uh, that quality, you have a quality, you have a quality. We just, as, we already made our choice.
We made that choice on December fourth, yes, and coming away from that meeting, I'm saying, coming away from that meeting. This is the most efficient way, I don't see, I don't see that it's the most efficient use of our talents and of our abilities. I don't see it. And I'm trying to figure out how to put those pieces together, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. And I also felt like not all of the conversation was had for people.
Not, not just to run on a kind of, or whatever, here for here, I automatically suppose. At least what I am, my understanding, when I asked, uh, all that, it's not, there is not that. That, um, just because you have been one year, it's not, it doesn't automatically that. Uh, whoever is running behind have to, obviously have to, stop signing. It's, uh, it's, uh. The decision is being made by vote, by collective votes.
Yeah, so, and I'm, I mean, it's very clear that I think we are at deadlock here. So most likely, we'll have to go for voting on it, but my next question is, depending on what the outcome is. There are other positions, who's gonna make call on those? Will the chair at that point in time, or again, we have to vote for different positions? Because, I mean, again, it's very clear, both are interested and totally fine, I mean, I get your point completely. I mean, I think it's fair. I mean, I get your point completely. I mean, I think it's fair that you are asking for it and it's very valid, right? But if we were to go with the vote, and depending on who gets picked up as chair, we will have, especially I think around treasurer and vice chair, that's where I think we have more challenges. So how are we gonna solve for that?
So, so in a typical, right? So, so is it gonna be challenge? Short answer is yes, it's gonna be that. So in a typical, um, as we prepare for the organizational meeting, and again, I wanna underscore again. Um, you guys are gonna come in brand new. You're just gonna take your oath of office. Any understanding that there's not gonna be major butterflies and just a whole bunch of stuff is just not true, right? Because it's gonna be.
Alright.
So, um, in a typical year, we go through and we say, this is a someone that's interested in chair. This is the person that's interested in vice chair. This is the person that's interested in clerk and treasurer. And there's even sort of a thought of, I would like to, so I might say, I would like to nominate Paris for chair, right? And so then I would tell that to whoever the person is running the election. They'd be like, great, Sarah, you nominate Paris. And some, and you might be like, I want a second that nomination. And so that's all orchestrated in that process, again, to not draw this out for hours and hours and hours. And two, to give people voices to do that. So, the reality is, is that absent sort of thinking this stuff through. You know, I mean, it's, it's, we, we don't, at, at this point in time, we don't have that. At this point in time, what I At this point in time, we're leaving it to going into the meeting on January eighth. And someone deciding, I'm going to nominate someone or I'm going to self nominate. And then waiting for a second, as we call for a second, so the process goes, we'll call for a nomination for chair. Oh, there isn't a second? Okay. Oh, there's, okay, so tell us, okay, so.
Sorry, I have a whole script for, for all of you. Sorry about that. There's no second thing required. Uh, you can nominate from the floor, you can self nominate, you can nominate another member. A member can decline the nomination kindly, should they not be interested in the position, but there's no second thing required.
So we call for a nomination. Are there, is there any nomination for chair? Someone says something. Are there any nominations for chair? Someone else might say something. Are there anyone nominations for chair? Someone else might say something, someone doesn't. So now we have two to three nominees.
Then you, um, have to publicly take a vote. I, I have my recommendations and we've reviewed this. Um, to still have it written, but it has to be read aloud, um, that way to not call, not, you know, the first person on the end doesn't have to say theirs out loud, and the last person doesn't have to like wait and say theirs out loud and be a tiebreaker. So, you still have to, but it has to be public, so it will be, and I know how to do it. Yes, so you have to write down, I, you know, you have to part, you have to write your name and you have to write who you're voting for. There's no secrecy, there's no like, I don't wanna, you have, it has to be public, it has to be announced out loud. So there's a whole plan. So, correct, but correct. So it would be collected and I, I have the whole scenarios for different things laid out. It also cannot be, um, should there be three nominations? It's not just who gets the, it has to be the majority vote. So if it's split and one person gets three and two people get two and two, that, that doesn't now so it would have to be read out. I've got. Basically, exactly. I didn't say it, but I described it, yes.
So for us newbies, right? So, okay, we call it for chair. Let's say we have two nominations, right? The voting happens. Now, we'll move on to vice chair, and then the same thing will happen and, okay.
But in the middle, but then it changes. So the way things said right now, I will call for them, I will call for the election of the chair. The minute that election of the chair is done, whoever is now sitting in that chair seat who has never been a chair before and now gets to go administer that.
Which is why I have a script for it now, for whoever.
Okay.
And then just to clarify, there's nothing that says, um, I mean, I just read the, what I'm seeing for, uh, January eighth. There's, if there's anything that like recognize that, that wants to, for us, myself, that I think that obviously, do that Friday. Our titles or is it just the opposite? They get like official.
It's just the opposite.
It's just the opposite.
Yeah.
So again, given we're gonna be on the podium for the first time, I'm speaking on behalf of all newbies, so we don't get butterflies in our stomach. Assuming, again, whatever the voting happens, right? I mean, it's, I think, very clear. Chair is fine, there is gonna be nominations, and vice chair, I'm hearing, there is some support. Treasurer is the position, that's where I think everyone is nervous. I, when I say nervous, meaning yes. I think Heidi, and again, I'm taking names, so just play along. I think you are okay with it if push comes to shove, you're not shying away from it. I heard from Millen you the other day that you are definitely not interested in treasurer. I heard from you that you are not interested in treasurer.
Right.
So this is where I kind of had that dilemma. So if she gets.
These are the pieces that I keep talking about. I'm sorry, there seem to be a lot of.
Sure, sure. Yeah. So that's where my nervousness comes in, because if you get selected as chair, who's gonna be the treasurer? Because the next names, you have obviously nominated for clerk, right? Unless you become treasurer. So that position is, I'm kind of nervous, and again, I want to make sure we don't get into that conversation in front of everyone. I'm less worried about actually you and chair, because I know we'll vote and one person will be chair. But treasurer, I'm clearly hearing like, both are not interested. Obviously, you are or you can. But then if you get selected as chair, then who's gonna be treasurer?
Oh, if Heidi gets selected as chair?
Yeah.
Well, then I guess we would have to see who gets, who gets, who makes sense of that.
I think if we can get to at least that discussion quickly here, I think some of it will be beneficial, because again, like I said, I, I think it's very clear, we're gonna have voting for chair, right? That's key one, but depending on who becomes chair, I think we have a challenge on the treasurer. And again, not trying to sort of put you on the spot, assuming you don't become a chair. Are you still okay with treasurer or? What?
I, I am.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, sure, yes, absolutely.
Director, I'm gonna knock it out of the park.
No.
I do everything a hundred percent and I'm confident in my ability.
Okay. Now, thanks, thanks. And again, I didn't mean to say that, hey, you should or you should not, I'm, because like I said, that one position, I'm, I'm not finding candidates. If it's not you, then obviously, again, and unless, I mean, Sheila, you just said, you're definitely not interested in treasurer. Uh, exactly, correct. You can always change your mind, but again, I'm, that's what I heard very loud and clear in all conversations that you two are not interested. That's why I wanted to make sure.
I'm focused on the job.
Melan, can I ask, is there something about the finance committee or the treasurer position that is, has been on, that, that we should, that is a concern to you?
It is not, no. Not saying it's a concern. I'm, I am at this point confident that I will be a good chair. And, uh.
And you hear the group talking about your skills as a treasurer and, and how that is, how that is helpful and and, and that is not important or not, not relevant at this point?
Nothing, nothing is not important. I'm not saying, but, but, but what I'm saying is just because the group thinks that I should become treasurer. I should not give up my ambition of being chair. Everybody has ambitions, right?
So help me understand a little bit, if there's a little, if, if there's a conversation that says you came in with a financial background, you sat on facilities and finance for the last two years, you make sure you were on both of those committees every single you come in with a status quo. And you have then given time to the district for the status quo. Beyond your own ambition of what you want to do, if we go back to the needs of the district. Like, we're saying, we could use you in this spot, like, right? Like, we're, we're choosing you to be in this spot. And I think what I hear you saying is, but my ambition is here.
So not just ambition, I think I can do a very good job of chair as well, also going back. When I was not elected treasurer, I, I lost ambition and, and, you know, I've lost my, my desire to become treasurer.
But you sat on the committee and contributed. You, again, if we're collectively in this for the district, but it's about your ambition and your.
No, no, this is what I meant, Sarah, earlier when I said you have, uh, it pains me that there are some members who are trying to put me in a box and say, you will be best as treasurer.
I'm not trying to put you in a box that I'm not thinking of you. I am thinking of our district.
Yes.
And I am thinking of the skills of our board, okay? And so, and as I think of our district and the skills of the board, and I think about the, the knowledge that you have from sitting at the table. I understand that you wanna be chair, and maybe in a next year, you could be chair. In this level of newness, it's not about you, and it's not about Heidi, and it's not anything about district. Cause I put the district first.
Well, no, no, again, that's, that's wrong. I'm, you're trying to imply, because we are being recorded, I need to say, that is a wrong statement to make. I de, I deny that I'm putting the, not just putting the district first. If I become treasurer now, what makes me better as a chair next year? Why can't I continue as a treasurer next year? So, so.
I, okay, I need to clarify again. I didn't say you're putting your hopes first. I said, I, I am only speaking for me. You are, you can speak for you about putting that you, I hear you saying you are putting the district first. So I hear that. I am saying I, is I am thinking about the puzzle pieces. I am putting the district, I am thinking about skills. And I am thinking about the fact that you've sat on finance and facilities for two years in a row.
Can I go back to one more comment?
Alan, Sina first, and then Dan, and then you.
Oh, I thought, I mean, they asked me to help with the musical, I don't know, so right now, we're just, we're gonna find it. You did such a good job first year. I would like you to have every year. I'm kind of, oh, I wish, I guess, I do realize I'm gonna be from now on, it's the only place where my place to be. Nobody else. First time around, I agree, for example, to do because I want to be helpful and useful. But when you are years past and you are, nobody's asking you opinion kind of thing, it makes, um, it's, can't say, maybe I have different, different ideas about myself. Yes, maybe I'm useful, but why other person is not, uh, um, trying to be useful, uh, there too, of my, my, my thinking. So, I would how say, Millen, I had been in that position. And sometimes when I would be put against, uh, so to speak, maybe somebody will, at certain point will start saying, no, thank you, let somebody that's why I am on this one. Just because I did it great, uh, for another time, doesn't mean from now on, until I am gone, I'm supposed to take care of it. Hopefully, somebody else can put some effort there too. That's my.
Right, I have one question, but right.
Can you ask your question first?
Okay, yeah. So, and again, I'm asking the same question I asked Heidi, right? So the voting happened, for whatever reason, if you don't get elected as chair, would you be okay with treasurer in that case?
I, I don't know at this point.
Okay. Okay, no, it's fair.
I wanna be mindful of that. I'm gonna ask here, I think all of our current concerns are not gonna move, um, if you, I mean. Um, but I, I think we're just that, in that sphere. We're all gonna come, I mean, I think, I think we're all gonna go home feeling awful if we did December and what we say. And so I just, I don't know, proceed here, I think we're.
Excellent. So, I think, I don't know that it's stressful in any way or any reason. Um, that is, uh, it is important that we have conversation, think, and it is important that everyone is able to have a space to say that they, I think, is, is, is one more time to say what you think or what you are feeling like. We have an understanding about how the process will go, right? Um, so it'll be the oath of office, that will be, and be a call for an election, the chair will get elected. Then the, then it will, the gathering will switch over to whoever is in line with his chair. And then that person will then call for the election of the vice chair, the clerk, and the treasurer, and then the meeting will proceed. There is, if when we talk about administrative work, it seems as if, um, I, I will be willing to have a conversation with anyone that is interested in nominating themselves as chair, to let them or have been nominated, to tell them how the meeting will run. One of the things that's important to have is a very firm handover to the next people. And that is not, so I think that I would be willing to have a conversation. If, if anyone who is interested in being chair is interested in learning how to be chair, I will have that conversation and we can set something up.
And I can do that right now, if you're interested in property. And then on the December fourth meeting also, I reached out and asked you for.
Did say that I allowed it to differ.
Appreciate that. Um, am I going to speak now?
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I wrapped up with Dan and I, and I, I'm sorry, Melan, I did not get to back to you on that.
That's fine, you don't, this is what I, I'm gonna step up and add this to you, I think everybody was in that meeting also.
If you can just tell us what it is.
Yeah. It says, you're a person who performed duties of clerk and treasurer, need not be a board member. And I said, I mentioned that earlier.
Thank you.
Well, that settled my question.
Okay, yes. You're welcome. Thank you. So my only ask is, again, for all senior board members, uh, we are obviously looking up to you guys, right? So, again, it is absolutely justified, absolutely valid to throw, you know, your hat in the ring. No, no doubt about it, but please, like, especially the next position, keep that in mind. So, once the chair is nominated, selected, then once we start going through the other positions, that's where I think we don't want to see disconnected in front of community, right? So if somebody gets nominated at treasurer, I don't want, like, I think person should not say, oh, I, I'm not willing to take that. I'm gonna be director, and then who's gonna be treasurer, right? That will look really odd. I think the voting is totally fine, I mean, I don't see.
I am, and have been, I think, that is my fault, since I've always been flexible. I'm always willing to try something new. I'm always willing to jump in at first. Um, so, you know, whatever it is, my, my perspective is that I wanna put the district. Because all of us think, right here, I mean, I think that matters. To them, how we function as a board, so you know what to come on that.
Great. Yes, please.
I do internalize a lot of things. I just wanted to say as superintendent, regardless of how this shakes out next Monday, work hard with the board chair. There's a tally today, and again, ten board chairs in my sixteen this year, so I think, I don't know, I haven't asked them, but I think if you ask them, I'd say, yeah. I think we had a really great working relationship, and I just wanted to share all of you that regardless of how the officers, uh, shake out on Monday next week, I'm gonna work hard with each and every one of you. So, it's not superintendent's job to determine who should be the board chair next year. Um, I, I will do everything I can to, uh, help the board chair be successful and and I would look for the same that in the board to our leadership and ministry to do this. Hopefully, that's what it, that's what we have to deliver. When the hay is in the barn, as we sometimes say in Iowa, um, then we're gonna, we need to lock arms and roll forward and make it happen, um, in the best possible way. Because that's what seventy thousand plus residents of the community expect, and that's what we need to deliver. So, that's the, the promise and insurance that I will give to each and every one of you, and I'm confident we can do that. We will come together. Um, I think we have to take a good account, you know, of the fact, this is a fact. We're going from nearly sixty years of board experience to about fifteen, and that's not then to be critical, it's just gonna be different. And, um, it's gonna require at least an operational license for us to be efficient and effective. And to help bring out the best in each other and help make sure that we keep only in the same direction that it means. See, we're gonna agree on everything. We're gonna have to really work hard on behalf of the larger community and all of our students to get up to speed fast, uh, stay and learn. We're going to have to really work hard on behalf of the larger community and all of our students to get up to speed fast, uh stay in learning mode and uh service mode and and being responsive to the meetings or unit and our students and our staff. And um I guess that's the commitment I would ask from each of you is that when uh everything's in place, let's hitch up and pull in the same direction because we have to.
As a board member, I'd appreciate what you just said, of course. And if I'm fortunate to be elected chair, I promise cooperation with you and collaborating for one purpose, and that is the just, the students of the district and families, that we will ultimate core. Now, we may have differences, but we work through that, we talk about it, we get it done. But it's my commitment if I'm elected board.
I appreciate that and I appreciate Jason's words. Also add in, I want to go back to something you gave back to us earlier. Use the phrase, the board sets the conditions. Want to leave us with that tonight, because when we walk out of here, how the board sets the conditions will determine our success. Each and every one in the room, it is not, we, I mean, we we've talked about it, that these are rules that I know none of you have entered into, like, it's a lift, being a board member. It's a lift being a an administrator in this district. I think a lot of times people don't realize the pressure and the work and the expectations. We have those expectations of excellence. We talk about excellence for each and every, that is our day to day in and out. That is our commitment to our kids, to our families. And being able to lock arm in arm is absolutely essential. Uh and at the same time, the board, for us, for Chase, for the his entire team, for me, the cabinet, S L P, our leadership team, you create our conditions. And we are absolutely in need of that alignment. And you've heard me also use the phrase, when when I talk about that through line of instructional leadership. And I talk about it from Chase to me, to the cabinet, to the principals, to students, teachers, students. I describe it as a link in the chain. And you'll also hear me say, nobody has a right to break that. Because when one of those links gets broken, the entire thing can fall apart. So I appreciate everybody's honesty and your willingness to have hard conversations because our students deserve that of us. So thank you for, I know it's long and I, I'll be honest, I don't worry about how late we're going. Because at the end of the day, um we got to get it right. We got to do it for our kids. So I I just want to say thank you to each of you for your care, your commitment and your desire for excellence for each and every, because I'll tell you, our team is showing up every day to be able to provide that role and our kids. So thank you.